Good evening and welcome to the Board's Districtwide Boundary Analysis Hearing. I just want to remind everyone here, please do not save seats. We have a full meeting tonight. Tonight, the Board of Education is holding a hearing to receive public comments regarding the district-wide boundary analysis that is currently underway. As always, Board members are looking forward to hearing and giving thoughtful consideration to your testimony. The order of speakers is printed on the agenda, available at the table, on the table at the door. When a speaker begins, a green light will go on 30 seconds prior to the expiration of the speaker's time; a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. The red light and a buzzer will go on to indicate that your time has expired and the speaker is not to continue beyond this point. We have many community members who will be testifying this evening. We ask speakers to be respectful to all who have signed up to testify by adhering to the time limits and stopping their testimony when the buzzer sounds. All speakers have been requested to provide their testimony in advance. If you have not done so, please provide our staff with 20 copies. They are right at the table over here at the front of the auditorium. If you are scheduled to speak, I would ask that you move to the front when the person before you is called to the podium, and this way we can expedite the hearing. Please note that tomorrow, Tuesday, November the 19th, the Board will hold its final work session regarding superintendent's recommendation fiscal year FY 2021 capital budget and the fiscal year 2021 through 2026 capital improvements program, as well as the Clarksburg-Sinica Valley and Northwest High School Boundary Study and Forest Nose-Mongomery Nose and Pine Crest Schools Boundary Study. If alternatives are passed at tomorrow's work session, the Board will hold a hearing on Monday, November the 25th. If no alternatives are passed tomorrow, there will be no need to hold a hearing on the 25th. I am Shebra Evans, the Board President, and I will now allow Board members to, my colleagues, to introduce themselves.
Paro Nion, good evening and welcome. I'm Vice President of the Board and I represent District 3.
Good evening, Judy Daca. I'm a member of the Board, District 1.
Good evening, thank you everyone for coming out tonight. I'm Rebecca Smandrowski and I represent District 2.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jeanette Dixon, Member of the Board at Large.
Good evening, buenas noches. I am Carla Silvestre, I'm a School Board Member at Large.
Good evening, Brenda Wolf, Board Member, District 5.
Good evening and hello to all of the students. I'm Nate Sinbait, Student Member of the Board.
Good evening, thank you for being here tonight, Jack Smith Superintendent.
Welcome, Monifa McKnight, Deputy Superintendent.
Good evening, Andrew Zuckman, Chief Operating Officer, welcome.
Okay, so at this time, we will begin the evening with a presentation from the consultants conducting the district-wide boundary analysis, WXY Architecture and Urban Design.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having us here tonight to present essentially what is an overview of the work that we will be doing. My name is Adam Lebinsky and I'm a Partner at WXY Architecture and Urban Design, often called WXY Studio, and our office brings together 50 different people with a range of backgrounds in policy, urban planning, urban design, and architecture. I'm joined here today with my colleague Kushan Dave, who will be the Project Manager, and he runs our Washington DC office. And as you can see here, we have a number of people in our office that will be coming together to work on the planning, policy, engagement, and data analysis side of things. We're also joined here this evening by Kim Sesko, who's a Principal at Public Engagement Associates, and they will be leading the workshops that I'll be describing here tonight and that will be kicking off in just a few weeks. We are also joined by Transpar. They are consultants that work on school transportation issues, and they will be providing us with a range of support. Very quickly, on some of our previous work, our office has been working in school planning issues for a number of years now. We recently completed a plan for District 15 in Brooklyn, which is a population of about quarter of a million people, looking at middle schools, looking at a range of issues associated with integrating those middle schools. We are in the process of completing a boundary plan for the City of Lancaster in Pennsylvania, and that has really looked at capacity issues and transportation issues. We've also done a capacity study for the City of New Rochelle. We've had ongoing work with the Department of Education in York City. We've supported Boston Public Schools. The last time, they redid their assignment policy. We did a lot of geospatial analysis for them and their enrollment projections. And we also have an example of work that Public Engagement Associates have done in Ellicott City. They've got a tremendous amount of experience in engagement in Maryland. So really, just to provide an overview of our study, we bring together two basic components. One is data analysis, and the other is community engagement. And our data analysis, we really want to take onboard a range of different considerations, contextualizing information, including thinking about growth in Montgomery County. And the community engagement, we also will take on a number of different approaches, having public workshops, but also doing one-on-one stakeholder interviews and small focus groups as well. So I want to make sure we all have a clear understanding of both the challenges in Montgomery County and how we'll be approaching our work. I won't go through this in detail, but we've been very busy studying Montgomery County Public Schools, its current context, its future growth, and also its history. And we're very well aware that there's been tremendous growth here in Montgomery County over the last several decades. So we have a snapshot of some of the data, many of you will know this very well, and some of the challenges that you have here today relate to fitting everybody into the schools, meeting the programming demands of schools today, looking at changing demographics, and also ensuring that there is good access to schools. And so as part of our work, we want to provide a comprehensive assessment of school boundaries, taking onboard some of the growth as well. Part of our work will look at receiving community feedback, you know, really considering the challenges of creating diverse schools. We will look at those challenges of creating diverse schools in the context of access to schools and of utilization, both at the school level and at the cluster level. We want to make sure that our work continues to reinforce Montgomery County's public school core values of learning, respect, excellence, and equity. There's an incredible history at Montgomery County Schools, and we've really been absorbing a lot of that. And of course, we want to emphasize that the purpose of this study is not to redraw school or cluster boundaries. Our work will not result in a set of redrawn maps. And so our approach again is to contextualize the information that we're looking at in terms of diversity, also looking at things like utilization and like access. So some of the components of looking at utilization includes looking at building capacity, elementary school level, middle school level, high school level, looking at feeder patterns and articulation patterns, and looking at the stability of assignment. In terms of diversity, we will be looking at student demographics and socioeconomic equity. We'll be looking at both racial and socioeconomic information. In terms of access, we'll be looking at proximity to school and those existing transportation patterns. And so we are at the beginning. We received data just a couple of weeks ago. We're immersing ourselves in that information. We are working towards a set of community workshops, and I'll show you the dates and locations of those shortly, and we'll begin to start initial outreach very, very soon. Our initial phase of work will include six regional public meetings as well as targeted outreach. One component of our work will be making sure that we're able to speak with hard-to-reach groups that don't always come out for large public events. We have six meetings on the calendar. We've spread these meetings out across the county, and I won't read through all of the information, but the first meeting is on December 4th, so very soon. And then in the second phase, we will really begin to shift from that first phase of work of data analysis to really starting to test ideas and test some metrics that may be parameters for how Montgomery County approaches issues of utilization, diversity, and access to schools. So once again, we will have a number of regional meetings, and we will once again do targeted outreach, making sure that we're hearing many voices. And then finally, the third phase of work is really pulling together what we've heard and pulling together our data analysis into a final report and presentation. And so I understand you have many people speaking this evening, so we've kept this very short, but once again, thank you for having us here this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we will begin hearing from our students. If I can call up to the podium Vicki Kidder. Go ahead and begin, I'm sorry.
Huh?
You can go ahead and begin.
Okay. Good evening, students, parents, and most importantly, Dr. Smith, Ms. Evans, and the members of our Board of Education. My name is Vicki Kidder, and I'm a junior at McGruder High School and a member of the MCR Executive Board. Growing up, I was often told that Montgomery County Public Schools was one of the best school systems in the country, something that I accepted without a doubt, having never stepped outside of my community. It wasn't until I got older that I began to question what really made us the best. I remember talking with my friends after visiting Churchill High School, and one of them mentioning how much better the students at Churchill scored on tests compared to the students at McGruder. Upon my asking why that was so, my friend replied, "They're richer than us," a reply that shook my longstanding faith in MCPS and a disparity that is all too common in this school system. How could we be the best when socioeconomic status determines a student's ability to succeed in this county? How could we be the best when our majority-minority schools see lower test scores and higher dropout rates than our predominantly white schools? How could we be the best when we pride ourselves on the diversity of our population but fail to address the diversity of need that exists among our students? In 2018, the average SAT score for McGruder, a majority-minority school with a 33% farms rate, was a 1093. The average score for Walt Whitman, a predominantly white school with a less than 5% farms rate, was a 1289, a 196-point difference between the two schools. 196 points that reflect more than a student's intelligence. 196 points worth of collegiate conditioning and SAT prep materials that the students at Whitman had over me and my peers at McGruder. If education is supposed to be the great equalizer, then let me ask you, where is the equality in that? It is almost indisputable that the boundary analysis will have a highly significant impact on the future of MCPS students, but we need to be careful to consider what we want that impact to be. This lies in what our county prioritizes. Tonight, I urge the Board to prioritize the diversity of our schools when considering school boundaries. Prioritizing diversity means combating disparities that have gone unnoticed far too long in this county. Prioritizing diversity means tearing down the walls between so many of our students and vital opportunities and replacing them with bridges. Prioritizing diversity means ensuring that MCPS provides each and every student in our county with the best education that money shouldn't have to buy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Hannah O'Looney.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Smith and members of the Board of Education. My name is Hannah O'Looney. I am a sophomore at Richard Montgomery High School and a proud biracial half-Japanese student. I attended Rachel Carson Elementary, a primarily white school located in a primarily white neighborhood where there was maybe one other Asian kid in my class. I remember being self-conscious about the food I brought in for lunch every day and being jealous of the kids who had Lunchables and Dunkaroos. I also, much to my regret, remember feeling embarrassed every time my mom came to pick me up instead of my dad, who looked like everyone else's parents. The uniformity of the student population made me feel isolated, and I spent much of my early education learning to conform with my peers instead of speaking my mind. What I didn't know at the time were the statistics. Rachel Carson Elementary School now has a racial makeup that is 50% white and a 20% farms rate, while Brown Station Elementary School, less than a mile away and in the same Quins Orchard High School district, has a racial makeup that is 10% white and a 66% farms rate. Families with children attending these schools drive on the same roads, walk on the same sidewalks, and shop in the same grocery store. And yet, these six-to-12-year-old children, our students, are polarized from one another, spending their childhoods in disparate communities because of an invisible line on a boundary map and the residue of segregation here in Montgomery County. I am now a student of Richard Montgomery, a high school that prides itself on student diversity, and I am proud to report that diverse schools are attainable and have been absolutely instrumental in my growth both as an individual and in my ability to empathize. My friend group boasts students from all across the globe and from various backgrounds, only because I've had the privilege to attend a school that values diversity and inclusivity. The statistics are clear. Racially diverse schools build students' confidence, foster creativity, and improve test scores. If I had diverse classmates back when I was in elementary school, maybe I would have been comfortable enough to share my food and teach my classmates about my culture instead of tucking it away. Dr. Smith and members of the Board of Education, Montgomery County should not be allowed to continue to boast our student diversity if we don't make an effort to promote and preserve it. We are so lucky to have so many students of diverse backgrounds here in MCPS, but the de facto segregation of our schools has rendered it useless. MCPS needs to be the pioneering school system to abolish this pattern of school and community segregation that we see not just here, but throughout the country, so that we can prepare our students for a new, inclusive, and diverse workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Chloe Apple.
Good evening, Ms. Evans and other members of the Board of Education. My name is Chloe Apple, and I've attended Resnick Elementary, Redland Middle, and I'm currently a junior at McGruder High School. We have 165,000 future doctors, teachers, politicians, plumbers, electricians, and leaders of tomorrow in MCPS. Each one of them deserves an equal chance to learn and succeed to attain their dreams. It isn't fair for the child who could grow up to cure cancer to be at a disadvantage because his school didn't have a good science program. Why would that happen? Could it be because there was a higher farms rate, the ESOL rate, and does that seem ethical to you? MCPS's nondiscrimination statement claims they will prohibit discrimination based on socioeconomic status. But I would ask you, Board of Education, are you following that guideline? When we can look across the county and see great disparities in educational opportunities, one could almost say, "Someone here is playing favorites." Which one of you will care to pick the high farms rate to be your favorite? At Resnick, I thought I learned a lot. I thought it was a perfect stepping stone to continue my education at MCPS. However, when I compared it with my peers, we had no fifth-grade field trip to Philadelphia because we were told it was too expensive. But if it was too expensive for Resnick, why does almost every other elementary school in MCPS have that chance? Maybe if I had gone to Philadelphia, I would have had dreams to become a lawyer. My interest in law could have peaked much earlier, but instead, we got a water day. What was that supposed to teach me? That two hydrogens and one oxygen and atom make it? No, I didn't learn that till 10th grade chemistry because middle school science wasn't much better. Maybe I didn't get equal learning opportunities because you spent the money on a slip-and-slide, or maybe it was because Resnick has a 54% farms rate. But this isn't about me not getting a field trip. This is about the inequalities in MCPS based on economic status. I want to be proud of my hometown, but I'm not proud of that, and neither should you. Vote now to support the boundary study so every one of those 165,000 students get an equal chance to attain their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Nick Asante.
Good evening, Board President Evans, Superintendent Smith, Board Members, my fellow students, and community members. My name is Nick Asante, and I'm a junior at Richard Montgomery High School. I'm very pleased with the Board's decision to go ahead with the boundary analysis despite the harsh criticism from members of the community. Today, as a student advocate and someone who cares about the education received by my peers, I would like to reiterate the importance of this boundary study and highlight a few boundary disparities that the county should address while conducting the study. The boundary study sets a precedent for fighting against a system that is rooted in inequity. Education systems across the nation see the problem of de facto segregation, and it speaks volumes that our county is making strides towards eradicating this inequity. Every student, parent, and community member wants to ensure that the education being received by the youth in our county is the best that it can be. We all want to ensure that the students of Montgomery County are being provided as many opportunities regardless of background, race, or socioeconomic status. However, as our boundaries are currently drawn, this is not necessarily the case. Specifically, I would like to highlight teacher discrepancies between the different boundaries. When we look at the distribution of teachers throughout the county, primarily middle schools, we see that schools with high farm and ESOL rates also tend to have a higher number of teachers with fewer years of experience. It's imperative that our county ask itself why this is. Now, it's not to say that teachers with fewer years of experience provide lower-quality education to our students, but it's quite alarming that there is a visible correlation between poverty rates and teacher experience, especially when our teachers with more years of experience are logically being paid higher but primarily teach at more affluent schools. And beyond teacher discrepancies, we see pockets of poverty being separated from surrounding pockets of wealth, leading to completely different schooling experiences for students living in these pockets. We see higher test scores and graduation rates at schools with lower farm and ESOL populations. We see racial and socioeconomic imbalances within populations of county-wide magnet programs because of a lack of preparation materials and information being provided to certain groups. We see inconsistency with school cultures, after-school activities, and course offerings from school to school. It's time we made sure high-quality education was universal throughout our county. It's time we ensured that all students were given the same opportunities regardless of where they live and who they are. It's time we had equitable boundaries. And to those greatly opposed to the boundary study, I would like to remind them that the aim of this study is not to punish those who are privileged, but to uplift those who are less fortunate. The boundary study's goal is to look at disparities amongst our school systems, boundaries, and give tangible data to our Board, who will try to eradicate said disparities. The boundary study is monumental. It will only benefit every student in our county, and I hope that everyone in this room is able to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Jason Wood.
Good evening. My name is Jason Wood, and I'm a junior and school president of Winston Churchill High School. I would like to start by thanking the ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Superintendent Smith, and all the other students who have come to support our cause. It was the first day of school this year, and I walked into my multi-variable calculus classroom and scanned the faces around me, searching for friends and familiar faces. However, I noticed something very different. In this high-level class at my school, there were no Hispanic or African-American students, none. I've gone to school in different parts of the county, the Wooten, Winston Churchill, and Down County Consortium clusters, and have witnessed a de facto segregation taking place. In the case of Churchill and other W schools, a predominantly Asian, white, and rich student body creates a culture that leaves minority and lower-income students that don't fit in behind. My school, like many others, faces another common issue. Classrooms are crammed with students who don't get as much individualized time, have trouble focusing with that many people in one room, and struggle forming strong bonds with their teachers. In one of my larger classes, the teacher gets bombarded by questions from 30-plus students, and I don't have an opportunity to get one-on-one help during class. Students, including myself, feel as if there isn't enough of their teacher to go around. As you all know, many of our schools are struggling with overcrowding, while many of them have empty seats at just 80% to 90% capacity. In fact, schools that are overcapacity like mine are oftentimes directly adjacent to schools that are undercapacity. While the Board is considering changes to our boundaries, I want to urge you all to consider that our county's population will shift in the future. Many overcrowded school clusters, like my own, are predicted to increase by 27% to 47% by 2040, which stresses the need once more for the proper utilization of our schools. While I will have graduated by then, I would like to remind the Board that these concerns are only growing by the day. While the Board of Education cannot address housing patterns in Montgomery County, it can take achievable and pragmatic steps like this boundary study in order to ensure that all of our schools are diverse learning environments with students from all kinds of backgrounds. I would once again like to thank the Board, the President, and Superintendent Smith for their unwavering commitment towards a school system that serves all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Uma Fox.
Good evening, Superintendent and members of the Board of Education. My name is Uma Fox. I'm a sophomore at Richard Montgomery High School, a proud resident of Silver Spring, and a representative from the Countywide Student Government Association, MCR. Last year, I stood in front of you to emphasize the importance of a county-wide boundary study. I am here again to reiterate my support. In the early 2000s, my parents moved to the DCC cluster in search of a diverse, accepting school community that would provide a quality education for their biracial children. I attended Rolling Terrace Elementary School, where diversity was not merely a value on a poster, difference was not made to be scary, and where I knew that equality and justice were necessary, tangible, and important factors of daily life. I learned in a place that looks like the America we will all be working in, one where understanding others will be key to success. But my experience continues to be an anomaly. For too long, MCPS has prioritized segregationist and Red Line era boundaries over diverse classrooms, and the property values of some over the values of our community. The majority of our students face segregated schools where education is both separate and unequal. This is leading us to have lower rates of student success and thus slower future possibilities for our county. People often claim the boundary study is nice in theory but economically unfeasible or harmful. Yet the structural inequities we see today manifest themselves in the dollars our students later make and the lives they go on to lead. According to the Century Foundation, students who attend integrated schools have higher test scores, are more likely to attend college, gain higher wages, and create a return of investment three to five times the cost of implementing programs. In addition, integrated educational environments enhance student health and leadership skills and critical thinking, decrease rates of student anxiety, and have later health problems. This research tells a clear story. An integrated, educated population will be a successful one. Some believe we can continue to put self-interest over these truths. I recently had a classmate tell me we didn't need diverse schools because she wants a, quote, "successful career," and those workplaces only have whites and Asians, end quote. Such antiquated racist ideas that assume Black and Brown students are educationally and aspirationally inferior are the root of opposition to the boundary study, not property values and not a meritocracy. These are simple euphemisms for racism, passed off as county-wide fact. But the truths and the voices of the county's minority community members do not lie. Diversity has and will always be in Montgomery County. It is our choice to decide if justice and equity will be there alongside it. Unless we recognize this and the stark gap between what our mission preaches and where we truly are, we as a community have failed to provide that education my parents and so many other families moved here for. And so I ask that we utilize the results of the boundary study to effectively and equitably rezone our schools, because in a diverse county, diversity in all schools should be the norm. In an excellent school system, excellence for all should be expected. And in a county committed to equality of opportunity, equal chances at success must be provided for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Jason Wu. Okay, I will call up Arvin Kim.
Good evening, members of the Board. Earlier this year, I testified on the importance of diversity in our school systems. I shared my experience with ignorance as a minority student attending a school where the student body is 70% white, and justified why the boundary study should focus on this importance of diversity. Since that time, I have spoken with countless of Since that time, I have spoken with countless of my peers, and it is in this discussion where I was told that diversity is power and it is, it is the idea that in this phrase lies that drives me to testify today. What drives me to testify today is to fulfill the purpose of our public education system, which was created in this country as a sign of the American dream. The same public education system that was created to provide an opportunity for all, as it is made clear that in education lies the path to success and opportunity. Unlike with private education, financial situations do not determine the quality of education one should receive in an ideal public education system. However, we live in a reality where it does. Walt Whitman High School, the school I attend, is ranked number one in Maryland in education, while Watkins Mill is ranked number 23 in Montgomery County. Obviously, one would prefer to attend the former, but the housing cost in Whitman is 130.8% times more expensive than that of the Watkins Mill area in the same county. On top of this, the student body of Whitman is 67% wa-, white, while Watkins Mill has just an 8% white demographic. This is where we must draw the line between coincidence and disparity. Unfortunately, this shows that our public education system is not the equitable equalizer it was intended to be, but a stu-, a system where a student's race and socioeconomic status determines the quality of education they receive. In a county that prides itself on diversity, the highest-ranked schools have the highest white populations. In a county that prides itself on diversity, the highest-ranked schools have the lowest rates of farm students. In a county that prides itself on diversity, yes, there is diversity, but is divided amongst schools and rankings. My name is Arvin Kim. My parents immigrated from Korea and I was born in Virginia. Seven years ago, my county moved to Montgomery Ca-, my family moved to Montgomery County in the Whitman District for my education and every day I recognized my privilege and this ability. But it's time we recognize that not everybody is in a position to do this. Not everybody is in a position to receive the quality of education they want or the quality of education they deserve. Today, the responsibility falls upon the Board of Education to provide every student in this county, from Bethesda to Gaithersburg, from Whitman to Watkins Mill, the education they deserve. Montgomery County is the most diverse county in Maryland and our actions should reflect this. Montgomery County should set the precedent of building a true public education system for a more equitable county, state and nation, a nation where once again this public education system was developed to give an opportunity to everyone, not just the wealthy, not just the white, but everyone. Members of the board, we are faced with the choice today. Will we ignore the disparity of so many of our students and neglect them the opportunity that this country promises? Or will we finally fulfill public education's purpose in building an equitable world? I urge you to make the right choice and focus on segregation in Montgomery County, as in the powerful words that stand true to this day, "separate is not equal."
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Imnet Kase.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith. President Evans is a member of the board. My name is Imnet Kase and I represent MCR SGA as vice president. I am here today to speak about the district-wide boundary study. My parents immigrated from Eritrea to Montgomery County, Maryland with one goal in mind, giving their daughters the best educations they could afford. This story isn't rare in Montgomery County. When we arrived, I enrolled in Harmony Hills, Wheaton Woods, and finally, Bel elementary School in Rockville. When I was in second grade, Habitat for Humanity gave us a home in Silver Spring, but my mother opted to keep me and my sisters at the schools we were attending for multiple reasons, including how much we'd moved around at that point and more apparent, the opportunities at the schools I was attending. My whole life, I've been a COSA student and the schools I've attended, as great as they are, are not as diverse as they could or should be. As a result, I was usually one of the few African-American students in my classes, my friend groups and my extracurriculars. It was incredibly isolating, especially to be in that position for 10 years in a county that boasts about its diversity. I often think about what my life would have been like if I wasn't a COSA student. My home school, Wheaton, is close, convenient and filled with students whom I can easily relate to. But as I think about it more, I recognize how different my life would be. Today, I am involved in numerous leadership positions at my student organizations, including MCR, MOCO, and Power and Student Government. And in those organizations, my school, Richard Montgomery, has a large presence and I can say without a doubt that my school, that the school I attend, is the largest factor in my participation in my leadership organizations, simply due to access. I am confident in the fact that if I had gone to my home school, whether it's due to the lack of knowledge, transportation, access or comfortability, I would just have not been involved in these organizations. The lack of access is also evident in the few students that attend and are involved in these organizations from those schools. The difference in the opportunity between these schools extends past extracurriculars. It affects information regarding magnet programs, financial aid, SAT, college in general, and can be a factor in graduation rates and school performance. While I respect my mother's decision regarding the schools me and my sisters attend, no parent should have to make that decision. I've testified in front of the board before and I will continue to do so. This boundary study and policy recommendations that it yields will prioritize diversity, opportunity, equitable resource allocation and facility utilization, only serving for the best of our county. So I urge you all to be in full support of this policy, of this boundary study and the policy recommendations it yields based on the efficacy in addressing said issues and I thank you for your support already. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Michael Solomon.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, Board President Evans and the members of the Board of Education. My name is Michael Solomon and I'm a current senior at Springbrook High School and a student organizer with MOCO for Change. I'm also an education policy director with the County Regional SGA. Over the next few months, as the boundary analysis gets into full swing, this county has the opportunity to collect some extremely valuable data on our school boundaries, and we haven't done something of this nature in decades and it's long overdue. School overcrowding has become the new norm and our student populations have become increasingly segregated by race and socioeconomic status. And no one is saying that this analysis, or even a complete redistricting for that matter, is a final solution to the opportunity gap or the educational disparities our county is facing. It is, however, a crucial first step, and that's why it's important that throughout this process, the board as well as WXY adheres to the recent changes to policy FAA, which places specific importance on student body diversity. It's also crucial that we look into the history of our school boundaries, as well as revisit the consortium, the current consortium model, which the county of office, the county office of legislative oversight said a few years ago exacerbated the existing issues of student diversity and the opportunity gap. And to my fellow community members, those of you in the audience today and those of you watching a livestream, I must say that it really pains me to see so many of us succumb to racist ideologies and divisive rhetoric. And because of the campaign of rampant misinformation that has characterized the dialogue, dialogue of the past few months, I feel the need to make a few things clear. First, redrawing school boundary lines is not the same thing as forced busing. No one on either side of this debate is causing for unnecessarily long commutes. And in many cases, adjacent and nearby school clusters have significant disparities that could be easily adjusted through smaller boundary adjustments. Second, regardless of who you are, where you live, or how much money you make, your property values do not and should not take priority over the well-being and academic opportunity of all of our students. And third, third, this school system belongs to every student and every family in every community, from White Oak to Gaithersburg, from Wheaton to Damascus. No one voice is more important than the others. We are equal shareholders here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we will open it up for board comments. If I don't see any lights, I'm going to assume that no board members have comments. Dr. Daka?
Yeah, I do. I want to thank the students for, and I know you're not finished yet, for speaking so eloquently about the opportunities that we as a board would like to provide for all of our students. And we thank you for speaking up about the boundary study and these are things that I know are important to you, and I really appreciate what you have said. I ran on, all these times that I ran for the board was on opportunity issues, so you're speaking to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daka. So now I will continue on to hearing from our students, and we will begin with William Walsh.
First off, I would like to thank the Board of Education for having us here and taking the time out of their busy schedules to listen to us tonight. My name is William Walsh and I attend Bethesda Chevy Chase High School. I am here to talk about one of its larger's issue, larger issues that I see every single day. This very same issue plagues a large amount of the high schools in MCPS. I am talking about the lack of racial diversity. I can tell the board anecdotally, statistically, that the racial diversity in Bethesda Chevy Chase is something to be concerned about. In the county as a whole, Caucasian and Latino people make up about the same in the racial composition, both hovering around the 30% margin. In Bethesda Chevy Chase, there is a 57% white statistic. In Walter Johnson, the racial composition is about 54% white. Other schools like Gaithersburg contain a high Latino population and lower diversity because, again, are, they are not in tune of the county's student racial composition. This illustrates a clear issue, a lack of diversity among several of our schools. Peer-reviewed studies have indicated that racial diversity in one's surroundings has a well-defined effect on intelligence, open-mindedness and overall positive intellectual functions. There is a clear importance to every student being exposed to different kinds of races, creeds, ideologies and other defining characteristics of our identities. We would do well to have racially diverse schools and yet they evade us. I think therefore that it is prudent for me and other students to urge the board and its constituency to set forth these stakes in the redistricting plan. Of course, redistricting the zones so that they more equity, equitably represent the diverse, diversity of the county. They should create a student panel that they advise, advise with on the topic of diversity-based redistricting, and of course, they should attempt to redistrict based on diversity of income. I would again like to express my gratitude to the board for hearing my ideas. It means a lot to me.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Shari Hari Ravi.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hari and I go to Albert Einstein High School. I would like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to speak and also for all of the progress made on the boundary analysis to ensure that equity, capacity and access are countywide priorities. I remember a few months ago, I was sitting on a student-led panel to discuss the boundary analysis and its impact on de facto segregation in our community. Our current SMAB Nate Tinby was there, former board member Jill Orman Faust was there, and many people interested in the implications of this boundary analysis can have attended. A man next to me, the only person there opposed to the boundary analysis, mentioned that the Board of Education needs to consider property values and busing when implementing its solutions. I couldn't help but wonder, seriously? The objective of the school board is to ensure that every student in their school district achieves the highest quality of education possible. The objective of a school board transcends racial, geographic and socioeconomic boundaries. Selfish complaints claiming that five more minutes on a bus and variations in upper-middle-class housing prices are as equally destructive as the injustice inherent in an unequal education must no longer be taken so seriously. According to Richard Rothstein, author of The Color of the Law, one-third of the nationwide black-white achievement gap results from variations in school quality. The issue of the achievement gap and of the de facto segregation partially causing it cannot be fixed with any one solution, but creating new school boundaries based on socioeconomic and racial diversity after the success of this boundary analysis will enable us as a county to move forward in healing our racial, racialized past. We call this issue de facto segregation, but de jure residential segregation has persisted nationwide far after the Civil Rights Act, with police enforcement of racial boundaries, the creation of racist housing policies, the corruption of urban renewal programs and more tactics that have plagued low-income communities of color in this country for generations on generations. By basing school boundaries solely on geography, we allow this history to remain invisible. When I see Bethesda Magazine comments on the boundary analysis, comments making claims like, "we shouldn't have, we shouldn't be punished for, because they aren't working hard enough to send their students to a better school," I see the same rhetoric I saw in, well, I read about in September 1956, when Poolsville parents demonstrated against the integration of their school. I think about how the walls of this very building, the Carver Educational Services Center, and how it went from enclosing the last segregated high school in our county to becoming the center of educational progress in Maryland. I believe we can create that transformative change once again across the county with the implementation of new school boundaries thanks to this boundary analysis.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Brianna Jackson. So we will go to Stephanie Madrano. Marrette Esfahl.
Good evening. My name is Marrette Esfahl and I'm a junior at Montgomery Blair High School and a student in Blair's Communication Arts Program. As a student of one of the most diverse schools in the county, I have, I have reaped the benefits of learning alongside peers with both the same and different backgrounds as I. As a Blair student and a person of color, I am here to speak about the benefits of cultural integration and the benefits of the boundary study. One of our proudest achievements in Montgomery County public schools is our diversity. MCPS has spent years tackling explicit bias and de jure segregation, but while that has been effective in the past, de facto segregation has been a major obstacle that prohibits our, that prohibits the county from making any more progress. The current blueprint for our boundaries and consortiums are not at all reflective of our efforts. The staggering difference between the number of students on, on the free and reduced meals program and the Down County Consortium versus the amount of students on the, on the farms program in the Upper County show, mirror how, how poorly the current lines are drawn. With the stu-, with students on farms making up 35% or more of the total student body population in the Upper County schools and, and the Down County schools and, I'm sorry, and Upper County schools having half or less than that, it sho-, it is, this shows, it shows one thing. MCPS is economically segregated. Research done by the Greater Good Science Center at UC Berkeley shows that students that experience high levels of diversity through, throughout their day perform better academically and socially. As a county, we have, we have always been working towards providing the best educational environment for every student. From AP classes and application programs to IB and honors courses, it is clear that our goal is to encourage the newer generation to use their maximum of, the maximum, the maximum of their abilities and get them ready for the real world. The current boundary lines are successfully keeping students segregated from each other, thus creating certain student, keeping students away from each other and stopping them from reaping from the, stopping them from reaping of the benefits of diversity. The boundary study is also a major step towards utilizing facilities. There are currently 3,200 students attending Blair in a school built for 2,800 students. This is due to the nine-feeder middle schools and the two application programs that are offered. Many students, many students live just across the street from, from schools like Northwood but are zoned in Blair. As a result of this, Blair is experiencing major overcrowding that has resulted in the addition of 10 portables. As you can see, the current boundaries just aren't working. Some of these needs to, something needs to be done about this and this boundary study is perfect. With the, with the help of this study, MCPS would be better able to diversify schools around the county without having to send students to schools nowhere near their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Nathan Tagany. Next, we will go to Beza Nagatu.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the community for input. I appreciate your self-awareness in the boundary's flaws and addressing them. My name is Beza Nagatu and I'm senior representing Northwood High School. I believe the boundary study should primarily focus on the diversification to further close the opportunity gap. We should celebrate the different types of people within Montgomery County and implement it. Although our diversity is preached about, our current boundary lines do not reflect this. Rather, they reflect the separation between different socioeconomics and races. Last year, I attended community meetings concerning the boundary assessment at Earlby Wood Middle School and Walter Johnson High School. The public comments from Bethesda, Bethesda Magazine from Quinn's Orchard Meeting alarmed me, prompting me to attend all the meetings I could afterwards. Immediately, I noticed there, that there was a lack of minorities present and the lack of low-income parents after conversing with one another. The lack of representation was disheartening to see, but it was expected. The only opinions that voiced, the only opinions that are being voiced are the ones that have time to come to these The only opinions that are being voiced are the ones that have time to come to these meetings. It is important to consider the underrepresented voices and not only the loudest ones. Another issue I feel that should be considered is Montgomery County's history of segregation and how that systematically affects minorities now. I live in Silver Spring, where Sundown Neighborhoods used to be located. It is vital to address the segregational housing qualities that barred blacks from purchasing or renting homes because of the longevity of its implementation. Housing discrimination against blacks was legal until nineteen sixty-eight. Although I understand the proximity of schools is an important factor to many, it can unintentionally contribute to the current division we see in neighborhoods today. The consultant should be unbiased in her view, focusing on how existing boundaries can be changed to distribute resources effectively, equitably, and within reason. It is crucial to rely on evidence so the boundary analysis reassesses the county lines holistically rather than focusing on one aspect more than another. I believe that increased diversity should be the main goal of this study, but it is essential to include all factors of policy FAA, including geography, the stability of school assessments over time, and facility utilization, all while ensuring those who are disadvantaged don't get the short end of the stick. Thank you, board members, for your time. My name is Beza Nagatu, and I hope you take what I say into consideration, and remember, all means all, not excluding those children because everyone deserves equal opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Jessie Huaychochia.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jessie Huaychochia. I'm sixteen years old, and I am a sophomore at Watkins Mill High School. I am also a proud alum of Montgomery Village Middle School, but I almost didn't go to Montgomery Village. After I finished fifth grade, my family moved to what my parents called the "bad neighborhood" of Montgomery Village. I still had the opportunity to attend the better middle school I was supposed to feed into, and my parents felt very strongly about this choice. However, after a summer spent getting to know my neighbors and future friends, I made the decision to attend Montgomery Village over Four-stroke Middle. My conscious, close-minded immigrant parents were nervous. After all, Montgomery Village was a bad school in a bad neighborhood with bad kids. I attended Montgomery Village from sixth to eighth grade, and I can say with immense confidence that I would not be the person I am, or would not be on the path that I am on now if it wasn't for Montgomery Village and all they had to offer. Montgomery Village Middle School exposed me to diversity and community like no other. I met and became friends, not just with students from different countries, races, faith, traditions, but most importantly, from different socioeconomic backgrounds. As a student ambassador at various school events throughout my three years, I was able to use my own cultural language background to reach parents and students in Spanish and educate them about unfamiliar aspects of public school in the U.S., such as after ed. Now that I'm a Watkins Mill Wolverine, I feel that I am prepared and equipped to be an open-minded citizen once I leave high school. However, not every student within our county has the same experience I've been fortunate to have. As a county that prides itself on its diversity, our students are still incredibly segregated as a result of school boundaries which have not been comprehensively changed. We should have schools that reflect our greater-growing diverse population. In a county in which some schools have a farms rate of over fifty percent, there needs to be a better distribution of income so all schools have a chance to serve some of the neediest students. For example, Watkins Mill with a fifty-eight point fifty-three percent of its students on farms in comparison to the thirty-three point two percent county rate average of students on farms. As a county, we should be making sure that all of our students are adequately prepared for the world by experiencing the world as it truly is. This boundary analysis will aid this issue because it will relocate and unite students regardless of their socioeconomic background. The goal of the boundary analysis isn't to pull students from bad schools and put them into good schools, but to promote the incredible diversity and real-world learning experience that MCPS has to offer. This will allow all students to grow into individuals who are accepting, flexible, unprejudiced, and opinionated, who will be prepared to go into the world, the workforce, and further their educational opportunities.
Thank you. Have your written testimony. Thank you. So, next, we will hear from Jadeen Vikram. Next, we will go to Adriana Quiñones Solano.
My name is Adriana Quiñones Solano, and I'm a senior at John F. Kennedy High School and a Legislative Affairs Deputy of MCR. I am here on behalf of the Down County Consortium students. As a student from the Down County Consortium myself, and many of my peers have experienced being stereotyped as someone who isn't smart enough as students from the upper-county schools, not being smart enough to take AP and IB classes, and being constantly reminded that as a minority student who also attends a majority-minority school, we have to work ten times harder if we want to be successful. The school system is not broken because of the lack of effort from the students. It's broken because of the barriers that are both deliberately as well as unconsciously created within our schools and our district. We have created a clear divide between upper wealthy county schools and down-county poor schools. I've experienced the effect of this within our county and communities firsthand. As students of the Down County Consortium, we experience racism and inequality. Majority of the people who make up the consortium are minority groups such as first-generation students and immigrant families. These schools and students experience the burden of having to address bigger obstacles without the adequate resources. As a result, we get lower test scores, less parent participation in schools, and less graduation rates. Our school system has inadvertently decided that our background, skin color, language acquisition, and where we live should determine our future, that a zip code holds more power rather than our potential to reach for success. There's a difference between making schools diverse and providing equitable opportunities to student families and communities. Being successful starts with being able to receive a solid foundation and equitable resources from our county. It is not simply just need for academic support from teachers, but also the school-wide structures of support put in place to allow the teachers and students to succeed. From my experience, while transitioning from the Salvadorian school system to Montgomery County, I've experienced teachers doubting my potential rather than giving me the support and assurance, but I've also experienced quality teachers who are not given the time, resources, and support needed to address the different challenges of large number of students with language and learning needs. I, as a first-generation student and a proud Latina, can be successful and exceed my own expectations and goals. However, many of my first-generation and minority students shouldn't have to work ten times harder and have to overcome the numerous obstacles put before us in a down-county school just to reach the same level of success as students from other schools. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Pranav Tatakonda.
I'm not Pranav, but I'm speaking for him today. Okay. Good evening, President Evans, Superintendent Smith, and members of the Board of Educations of one of the most diverse school systems in the nation. My name is Pranav Tatakonda, and I'm a student at Richard Montgomery High School and the president of Montgomery County Regional Student Government Association. First off, I would like to thank you for valuing the diverse voices of this county. Hearing different perspectives and opinion is key to making this world a better place, and is with this philosophy that I commend the boundary analysis. For years, zip codes have and will continue to determine the education quality of students. This goes against every principle of the county, state, and nation, to give equal access to each and every individual to reach their highest potential. A boundary analysis is one step closer to understanding why there is correlation between impoverished areas and poor academic performance, what factors lead to such correlations, and how such disparities should be addressed. As MCR, SGA, County Regional Student Government President, and a student at one of the most diverse schools in the nation, I have witnessed firsthand how powerful and shaping it is to spend time in the intellectual setting with students who think, look, and act differently than me. That is the value of education, to not only learn from textbooks, PowerPoints, and other sorts of that nature, but to learn from one another. I recognize the opposition to this boundary analysis, and by no means is this an attack on your views, rather, it is an affirmation that the boundary analysis is only for the good of this county and the hundred-and-sixty-four thousand students that walk in over two hundred schools each day. This is unprecedented. That can lead to skepticism, but again, as a student who has witnessed the character-building power of diversity, I support the study moving forward. I hope my sharing of my philosophy and reason for support is an important consideration for you all. That is not just about the numbers, but also about the current and future generations in Montgomery County. This study, in theory, can reveal a lot of information that the county can further decide action to take. So, I hope you all come together and support this study as I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
I just want to take a minute to thank our students for coming out tonight, and to thank you for your courage in sharing your views about the boundary analysis study. I also want to just say, give a shout-out as well to your teachers. You all are amazing, and, yeah, you are. And I appreciate the opportunity to hear from you this evening. By the way, do we have any teachers here this evening? If you could stand, just thank you very much for teaching our students. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon, for announcing our students. Mr. Tinbite.
I also wanted to thank all of the students who came out here to testify today. I really do commend you all for coming out, even though probably most of this wouldn't affect you all, being that most of you guys are middle schoolers or high schoolers, so it's good to hear that you all are really engaged and focused on your future, so I appreciate that.
All right. So, at this time, we will begin the next portion of our hearing for individuals and organizations. We will hear from Lynn Harris.
Good evening, President Evans, Dr. Smith, members of the Board of Education. My name is Lynn Harris, and I'm the president of Montgomery County Council of PTAs. And the mission of MCCPTA is to make every student's potential a reality by advocating with and for our students. And as such, MCCPTA fully embraces both the purpose and the scope of this boundary analysis, and I also note with appreciation that the scope of work of the boundary analysis includes two things that MCCPTA has been talking about and advocating in favor of for several years. One, looking at non-CIP solutions to our capacity challenges, like adjacent, looking at adjacent cluster schools, or adjacent schools that cross cluster boundaries, and also asking the question of, why don't we consider a routine and proactive system of regular boundary analysis so that we are proactively working to prevent lopsided demographics in our schools and the overutilization of some instead of belatedly reacting to those challenges? Equity has long been a core value of MCPS, and even before authorizing this boundary analysis, MCPS and the Board started to shine a bright light on the current composition of our schools. The Board policies long identified four factors to be considered when we're looking at boundary issues, demographics, geography, stability of assignments over time, and facility utilization, but led by its powerful and eloquent student members. In revising policy FAA in September of twenty eighteen, the Board emphasized its commitment to equity by stating that henceforth, when determining school boundaries and assignments, MCPS will especially strive to create a diverse student body in each school. The students have spoken so incredibly eloquently about their lived experience of our schools in a system in which we are so incredibly diverse, yet our school system is not individually comprised of diverse schools. We have farms rates in our high schools that range from one point two percent at the lowest to fifty-nine point six percent at the highest. Perhaps most strikingly, we have a hundred and thirty-five elementary schools with the lowest farms rate of zero and the largest of eighty-eight percent. By its face, that shows that the composition of our schools is far from equitable. Our students have spoken eloquently about their lived experience and their vision of truly equitable and diverse schools, and that advocacy stands in resistance to a national climate in which they live, which makes othering acceptable and mainstream. These students hear every day, not you, not here, you're brown, you're black, you're Muslim, you're Jewish, you weren't born here. However, during the series of public meetings that were held earlier this year to talk about this boundary analysis, some of those students heard to their face those same things. Implicit and explicit bias were in full display, and I'm glad to see that we are working to address this.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Ravon Johnson.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, President Evans, members of the Board. I'm Ravon Johnson, and I'm representing the NAACP Parents Council. As part of the countywide boundary study, we have several topics that we would like for you to consider as part of this analysis. That includes managing homeowner expectations, consistency in programming across schools, increasing the number of minority teachers in classrooms, accepting and preparing for diversity, let's strive Montgomery 2050, remembering the have-nots in the process, and sharing parent advocacy across schools. Since I don't have a lot of time, I'm just going to speak on three of those things. Managing homeowner expectations. De facto segregation has become an issue for our county. This is a negative outcome that can occur when economic lines are drawn around neighborhoods. We recently saw firsthand, under the Silicon Valley Boundary Study, that emotions can and will arise when homeowners' expectations are challenged. Today, when a family invests in a new home, they invest with the understanding that their home is tied to a certain group of schools. As a matter of fact, one of the first things that a realtor will provide a potential home buyer is the list of schools associated with the neighborhood, which often becomes a deciding factor of whether or not they will buy. Divorcing schools and neighborhoods will be a challenge, because changing this mindset would be like eating an elephant, and this cannot be done in a single bite. But it can be done one bite at a time, so consider supporting the proposal that Delegate Moon plans to introduce in twenty twenty. This proposal will prohibit realtors from tying public schools to a new home, and it will require homeowners to sign an addendum acknowledging that current public school assignments may change in the future. This is how you manage expectations and how you minimize the emotions that surround boundary changes. The second item, consistency across programs. This should also be investigated. I have a family friend who teaches high school math at Anaronda County. He took a current teaching position because he liked the consistency in programming. This benefited teachers and students. If a student in this county transferred from one high school to another in the middle of the year, there would be no interruption in learning because all topics are taught at the same pace in all schools. You don't have to live in a particular part of the county in order to have access to AP math because it is offered in every high school. There are many subjects being taught right now in the down-county that are not taught in the up-county and vice versa. This inconsistent access to subject matter promotes this notion of a great school versus a not-so-great school. The third item, and hopefully I'll have time, is accepting and preparing for diversity.
So, we have your written statement.
Okay, I guess you'll have to read that.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will, we will. Next, we will hear from Dan Benstock.
Good evening. My name is Dan Benstock, and I'm a lifetime resident of Montgomery County and the parent of two children in the MCPS school system. I think the one thing we can all agree on is this is a very complex issue that requires complex analysis on the impact this could have, both positive and negative. What I'm about to say now is addressed not only to the Board but everyone in this room, but I would like to first thank the Board for their efforts thus far to encourage civility and respect during this whole entire process, which I know cannot be easy given the multitude of points of view. I would like to use this three minutes to talk about more than just the pros and cons of potential redistricting. I would like to talk about diversity as it pertains to this process. We all know that diversity is not just about diversity of race and socioeconomic status, but it's also about diversity in points of view. On the MCPS website, when discussing the Respect Initiative and Diversity, Montgomery County specifically calls for open, honest communication without fear of retribution and respect for various points of view. I have seen a number of community members labeled as racist- I have seen a number of community members labeled as racist, particularly online, when they are concerned about redistricting. But the truth, which I think we can all assume is, assume is the case for most decent people, is that residents concerned about redistricting are not against racial or socioeconomic diversity. What they are concerned about are the potential negative impacts of redistricting, such as increased transportation costs that will be taken away from schools themselves, longer bus times, and the impact of exhaust fumes on the environment, earlier mornings and less sleep, higher traffic congestion due to more buses on main roads, less access to after-school activities and childcare, and perhaps most importantly, the decreased ability for children to socialize with classmates outside of school, among numerous other real impacts on day-to-day life. These factors have nothing to do with race or socioeconomic status. To characterize people with valid concerns as racist or classic, classist is a disservice to people of all races, religions, and orientations who have fought so hard for equality and freedom of speech throughout our country's history. My hope is that as this process continues, all sides can make their arguments in a passionate but non-personal manner. This is what our country stands for, and I hope it's what the Board of Education and Montgomery County will continue to stand for and stridently encourage as this process continues. And that all starts with, as Montgomery County has stated, open, honest communication without fear of retribution. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Jennifer Steer.
My name is Jennifer Steer, and I'm a proud graduate of Ritchie Park Elementary School, Eastern Middle School, and Richard Montgomery High School. I'm also a proud parent of two current and one future MCCPS students, and I'm here today as someone who wants to do what is best for all of our children. I stand with the Board and agree that it's about time for a countywide boundary analysis. For decades, decisions have been made at the cluster level and never revisited. There are students in the county who get on a bus every day and bypass one or even two closer schools before they arrive at their own. There are neighborhoods that are within walking distance to a school, yet the students ride a bus to go elsewhere. Using the boundary analysis to address school utilization and optimize transportation patterns makes perfect sense. But I'm concerned that the factors being considered as part of the boundary analysis are not aligned with the desires of the community or what makes the most fiscal and logical sense. Specifically, I'm concerned that boundaries are being used as the primary tool to address inequity across our schools. The lack of inequity is a major problem in the county. I do not disagree with that. But are boundary changes the best solution for this problem, or are they just a way to make things look more equal on paper? Now, I've heard the Board say that there is misinformation and that no one is saying we are making kids have long commutes and moving them away from their local schools, but decisions that have been made over the past couple of years tell another story. In September of 2018, the Board made a decision to ensure that the diversity of the student body gets greater weight in boundary decisions than any other factor. And just this month, in the recent Up County Boundary Study recommendation, the superintendent's recommendation stated that the goals were to minimize the FARMs, the disparity across the FARMs rates. And further, he noted that he did not select the option which advanced the geography factor because it did not advance the demographic characteristics of the school factor. So in other words, when it comes to boundaries, the measure of success is equalizing the statistical makeup of the school demographics. This is not the kind of equity we should be trying to achieve. Equity means making sure every student has the support they need to be successful, regardless of their race, address, or socioeconomic background. Equity means providing more support in the places where it is needed more. Where are we looking at the types of resources that can be put into a place at a school with a higher percentage of students who receive FARMs? And where is the cost-benefit analysis of how various programs help children as compared to reassigning boundaries to equalize the demographic profile of every school? And why aren't we recognizing that different schools do have different needs? And we should be targeting the limited funding that we have to provide proven programs and support for those students who need it the most? Boundaries need to be addressed, and so does the achievement gap, and so does equity across the schools, but let's make sure we're using the right tools to solve the right problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Melissa McKenna.
My name is Melissa McKenna. Two weeks ago, I quoted many of you during my testimony. Tonight, it will be a voice from the past, and it is the infamous quote, "It made sense at the time." Thank you, Bruce Chrisbell. We will never forget you. When Silver Creek Middle School opened in 2017, the final resolution included a review period of five years after opening to be done in the 2021-2022 school year. Yes, that is exactly what we need to do with any recent boundary decisions, I'd say, within the past five years. The Highland Elementary School island might have made sense at the time, but it was never reviewed. Fortunately, those school communities agreed on how to resolve their situation, and they were reboundreied in 2018 to benefit the students and the families. Most of all, I strongly encourage mandatory boundary review after a full year for any future decisions. Very basically, and that's my heads up, I'm about to dive into the weeds, please review all relevant Board of Ed policies, consult with other agencies, government bodies, and yes, state legislation policy. The Board unfortunately has conflicting policy. In the adopted resolution from January 2019 to undergo a boundary analysis, there's a specific mention of policies FAA, ACA, and ACD. And it is policy ACD, Quality Integrated Education, that I have tried to call attention to for the past several years. It concerns the placement of academic programs. I won't call out section and verse, but in strengthening schools, the Board of Education is committing to taking reasonable measures to enhance the diversity of student enrollments within each school. One action is implementing magnet and choice programs. To me, that would have placed Chinese immersion at Twinbrook Elementary, just at French immersion is at Mirrievale Elementary. But that's too simplistic of an answer. Otherwise, the then gifted and talented program at Barnsley would have been moved out to solve their 180% overcapacity situation instead of an addition. Program placement. Decisions regarding placement have had a greater and greater an impact on the CIP in the past few years. In 2017, it was decided that Pep Inc. needed to be moved from Ashburton Elementary, so that their six students per three classrooms needed to be 25 students in three classrooms. Program placement should always be for the benefit of students, period. There's also community schools that the Kerwin Commission is specifically stressing. But I'd like to say that MCCPS isn't alone. In policy ACD, the Board will advise Montgomery County Planning Board, County Council, County Executive, and other appropriate state, county, and municipal agencies of any government policies or practices which have or could have a beneficial or adverse impact on maintaining quality integrated education. The public schools alone cannot assure quality integrated education for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any board lights. I'm going to continue on with Amy Dembski.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Last week, The Washington Post published a story about Howard County's school redistricting plan, which it characterized as, quote, "having exceeded the plan that many had expected." According to The Post, the Howard County Board of Education, quote, "didn't just aspire to relieve crowded schools, but instead aimed to further socioeconomic integration of schools so that the neediest students were more spread out, easing concentrations of poverty," end of quote. And while the Montgomery County Board of Education has not indicated that it wants to move children away from their community schools, we see what is happening in Howard, I mean, in, yeah, in Howard and Fairfax Counties, and we're concerned. Like many of the students who testified here tonight so eloquently, I agree with the Board's decision to undergo a boundary analysis and the need to better understand overcrowding schools. I also agree that there is a socioeconomic inequality across this county. Unfortunately, the boundary discussion is being used as a tool by some to address these inequities. I do not agree that boundary changes will resolve all of these complicated issues. Addressing overcrowding and underperforming schools are completely different problems that cannot be fixed by one solution. We need to avoid redistricting policies that hit all the right buzzwords but whose success is not proven out with empirical data. I respectfully submit that before any options are put forward, we really need to understand the costs and what the benefits would be. Our community is entitled to transparency and evidence. I support the Board of Education's strategic plan for learning, accountability, and results, and its focus on improving teaching and learning through strong academic performance or strong academic programs. Each of our children has unique needs, and while I commend the passion shown by the students and the adults here tonight, we need to focus on how we can help each individual student instead of upending the strong foundation we already have in place. If the thesis is that children who live in poverty do not have the same access to educational resources as children from families with means, then let's talk about how we get there. Do some schools need PTA mentoring to increase parental involvement? Do students need more tutoring? Can we better incentivize highly-rated teachers to work in schools with the most need? How can we fulfill the needs of underperforming schools?
Thank you. We have a written testimony. At this time, we will hear from Rami Kandal. Kandal?
Kandal. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education and all the guests in the audience tonight. My name is Rami Kandal, proud parent of three current students of MCCPS and one recent graduate of an MCCPS. I realize we are just at the assessment stage of this process, and no decisions have been made, but I wanted to share a few thoughts with you. While I respect the initiative of the students, and they were very good tonight, there are several reasons why many residents feel keeping community schools as community schools and increasing resources to those that most need the resources is the most realistic option. We are in support of the important intention of closing that achievement gap, but even a positive intention can have negative impacts that cannot be overlooked. First, we all know that the Board of Education must utilize taxpayers' money carefully. Redistricting that will inevitably cause a spike in busing children will be a significant drain. But aside from the drain on our budget, how will you deal with extracurricular activities, such as sports, plays, or meeting with teachers before or after school? Here is a very important question for you. For children who are no longer able to walk to school, will there be a separate bus system developed to take kids home after all of their activities? How many buses would that require, and how much extra money would that take away from the budget? Secondly, we can also agree that a sense of community, especially in a world that is becoming more detached due to the impact of their cell phones, is more important than ever. If you value maintaining a sense of community, any significant redistricting would dramatically and negatively impact the sense of community across the entire county. These days, it's more important than ever for us to support our children at sporting events, musicals, and other community activities. A significant redistricting where families don't live near schools or the families of other students would tear apart the fabric and displace any remaining sense of community across the county. I think we can also agree that with families who live far from school, the sense of community and support for children at all schools will be damaged. My oldest son recently graduated from an MCCPS school, and he proudly played lacrosse for his school. What was the most exciting thing and awesome thing for me to see was that his, from his freshman year, his two younger brothers would come cheer him on at lacrosse, and they would bring their friends from the neighborhood. And now all of their friends are playing lacrosse and want to play on his high school team. Busing would remove this from the neighborhood. My children have wanted to see plays at the local high school. Why? Because they know a sibling or a friend in the play. With that said, I also acknowledge that there is an achievement gap that cannot be overlooked. Something must be done about this, but we need the right type of tool to fix the problem. In that regard, I would like to quote a student from Springbrook High School, Nalaio Momi, in an article in WAMU. He stated, I quote, "Other strategies would be equally effective against the achievement gap, a proposed Chromebook or Wi-Fi hotspot rental program, for instance." And he also went on to say, "To me, that can close the achievement gap a lot better than increasing diversity can, because it targets opportunity and a lack of opportunity among students." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Paul Geller.
One of the toughest parts of my job as the immediate past president of MCCPTA was not the embezzlement where somebody took money. It was not the fighting, you know, about various issues behind closed doors. The toughest part of that job was going around throughout our county, a county I love, and hearing people come up to me and saying, "You know something? We have problems in this school, and you know why? It's because of those people. You know, it's because of that group. It's because of him and her over there." It was always somebody. I have to tell you, in the four years I have served on the Executive Committee of MCCPTA and traveled to this county, there wasn't one single group that was not mentioned to me as the problem behind something. It bothered me tremendously, and I made no secret of telling many of you, I have no idea how to handle people like this. These are adults telling me this. Yet, when I hear our students come up here and testify, one after the other, about how they feel, it makes me so incensed that rather than curl up and only and stay in my basement after a rough couple of years, it makes me want to keep fighting for these kids. It's not fair that they have to endure what we adults have created. Now, socioeconomic is a totally different ball of wax. Can't address that all in one hearing. However, what we can address is choice. I think all of our students who are at oversubscribed schools deserve a choice. I call it MCCPS choice. They should be allowed, if their school is overcrowded, to go to another school nearby that's under-enrolled. If it's at 100% or less, they should be allowed to do that. Now, I say that based on personal experience. Where I live, there are four elementary schools closer to the elementary school that I belong to. That's the fifth furthest away from my house. Now, this was all done years ago, as different subdivisions came online and things got just kind of out of whack. But I feel very sorry for the kids that are in these overcrowded schools that want a chance to do something better. This happens based on seating capacity. It happens based on availability of programming. We deserve to let the students decide with their families and guardians where to go. I would ask the Board of Education and MCCPS to make a bold move over the next six to eight months and strongly consider letting families decide where they want to go. There's two benefits to this. First of all, they get to choose where they want to go, which is a huge plus for a lot of families. And second of all, it helps regulate the diversity in this school system as well, because students can come to schools where ordinarily they wouldn't have a chance to get their foot in the door. You don't have an easy task, and I don't envy you for this, but I do admire you for being on the Board of Education, because this is very important work you're doing, and I thank you for addressing it.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Jennifer Steer.
Hi, I'm actually reading Yara Goncalves's testimony for her. My name is Yara Goncalves. I have an eight-year-old at Beverly Farms and a 13-year-old attending the Parkland Magnet Middle School. I am unable to actually attend the hearings, as I do not have gas in my car while I'm waiting for my next paycheck. Please consider this as my testimony, as it is relevant to my ability to support my children should they attend a school far from my home. I'm a full-time graduate student on a 504 plan. I won't be able to pick them up from after-school activities if they can't walk home. I won't be able to attend PTA meetings if I can't walk. Geographic proximity has to be the top priority for parents like me. One of my sons currently attends a Magnet Middle School program but cannot continue to a Magnet High School program, as the financial and emotional strain on our family has been too difficult. He will be moved back to his home school, Churchill. Not everyone in the W schools is as affluent as you assume, even if we don't qualify for FARMs.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Pete Freeman.
Members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Pete Freeman. I'm a 1992 Whitman graduate, and my children now are at Pyle in Whitman. I am proud to be a product of Montgomery County Public Schools. Our citizens get exercised about all sorts of issues, but nothing brings them together or tears them apart like the school system. So when the Board approved moving forward with the boundary analysis and allowed proponents to frame it solely as an effort to promote diversity, I was disappointed but not surprised to see some parents offer up racist quotes for local news outlets to replay for months. Nor was I surprised- Nor was I surprised that student advocates labeled anyone who challenged the value of the boundary analysis as a racist prank. But I was surprised that the Board didn't push back against this narrative, allowing our community to rupture along generational, geographic, ethnic, and socioeconomic lines. At the outset, you should have stressed that school diversity, though an important goal of the analysis, is not the only goal, and that the Board will not pursue diversity now at all costs. For example, you knew early on that the analysis contractor would consider geographic proximity to schools. Making this clear would have calmed the fears of many in this room who simply want their kids to have short commutes. It would have also tempered expectations of the most vocal advocates for diversity, who will likely be disappointed by the results of this study if it is conducted per the RFP. Let's be honest, creating real equity, real diversity, requires more than boundary study can offer. It requires more than shifting students from Wooton to Wheaton and vice versa. It requires putting more resources into underperforming schools and constructing new schools so that when people move to the county, they don't only look at the high-profile ones. It requires policies that create economic opportunity and growth so that people of all backgrounds are attracted to our communities. And it requires affordable housing everywhere, not just near the metro or in the eastern half of the county. Parents from Bethesda-Potomac, I'm talking to you. You need to welcome new developments and stop clinging to single-family zoning and other policies that effectively limit demographic changes. If you don't want to be called a racist, don't oppose affordable and mixed-income housing developments solely to maintain the character of your community or to keep your property values high. In short, let's all appreciate the limits of this boundary study. We don't need to accept de facto segregation, but we do need to accept that it is the byproduct of core problems. It is not something that can be fixed in a year by a consultant from New York.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Sharice Scott.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I wasn't really sure how to prepare this testimony when it was suggested that I come up here and do it. So it's all over the place. It addresses a lot of different people in the room, and as I watched things kind of going back and forth online and all of that, I decided that I wanted to just address the people in the room first and just encourage you to invest in your community, invest in your neighboring schools, to ensure that they're their best they can be for all the students that walk through the doors and/or on the streets of the communities. By embracing your communities for where they are and what they are, and putting the same energy behind the thought of boundary changes into coming out to testify for the needs of the school community when it comes to the capital improvements and the operating budget that determines the programming that can come to your schools, you'll find that your school community can actually be whatever it is that you need it to be, because your voice would have been heard, and you can then hold your school system accountable for what you've asked them to do for you. Last year, prior to the commissioning of the district-wide boundary study, the Northeast Consortium and Sherwood Cluster Schools requested a boundary review for the express purpose of a new development, a new city, in fact, Viva White Oak, that is coming to that community that will no doubt have an impact on the landscape as well as the economic workforce development opportunities that can come to students and families there. We talked about segregation and homeownership, and who can afford this and who can't afford that, when in fact, if we invest in our children and give them an opportunity within their schools to work in their communities, they will be able to afford to live where they work and where they learn. And our ability to put things in place for that to happen is right now. It's different. There is a developer who wants to work with the school system. In our CIP now, it says 20 years. In a meeting with the developer last week, the first phase of residential is four to six years. So it's been requested that we present something in writing from him. This testimony reflects something in writing suggesting the phase of development that's coming and the opportunity for us to collaborate in an integral way to show how working with the schools, the businesses, the families, and the community can really result in a positive outcome for everybody. I look forward to a response from the school system, and I just want to remind everyone that it's not the school that makes the kid successful, it's the collective school community and their families that help the kids define what success means to them by encouraging them to strive for excellence, by embracing them and loving them and lifting them up, no matter what their circumstances can be. And that's not something that teachers or school leadership can do by itself. It's our village and our community. Thank you.
At this time, we will hear from Claire Gilillo.
Good evening to the Board and community members. My name is Claire Gillo. I'm a junior at Richard Montgomery High School and one of the co-presidents of Montgomery County Students for Change. We are an all-youth organization that strives to solve the most pressing issues of our time as a unified student force. In Montgomery County, our school boundaries are one of these issues. Throughout this process, I have been able to attend several community meetings in which the Board has solicited the opinions of concerned community members. Like many other students, I went into these meetings knowing what I've been told my entire time in public education, that our diversity is what makes our county strong. I left feeling the same way many other students felt, discouraged by the fact that history repeats itself. In 2019, in the county that prides itself on its immense diversity in terms of socioeconomic status, race, ethnicity, and background, we are witnessing modern-day school segregation. Not only is it being witnessed, it is being promoted. It is being accepted as the way things are and the way things must remain for the sake of convenience, not for our futures, but for those who do not want their kids to attend school with those who are different from them. At one of the meetings I attended, I was told by an adult that we need to stop talking about diversity. As students, we refuse to accept this. As the Board of Education, not only do you have an opportunity to do something about it, you have an obligation. Your job is to do what is best for the students, and that is to promote equity through equal educational opportunities. It is an undeniable fact that separate is inherently unequal. With this analysis, it will not be enough to simply highlight that we have a problem. It is the actions that follow that will truly make a difference in the lives of students for generations to come. On behalf of myself and Montgomery County Students for Change, I urge you to take steps towards a more equitable county and a future that we can all take pride in. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Melissa Bydran. Okay, we will go to Victoria Hart.
Hi, distinguished Board members. Thanks for having me. I walk my kindergartner to school, and I enjoy it so much. Thank you. I'd like to thank you for listening to all of our concerns, for making decisions that are in fact the best interest for all students. I appreciate that all parents care about the welfare and success of all students in all schools. With that in mind, any boundary analysis and change should not polarize or divide this county and its individual communities, but rather seek to constructively unify them toward the common goal of our children's educational progress. All families have hard-working parents who care for their children's progress and have their own individual struggles. No one can afford to lose anything as a result of a significant boundary change. Throughout this process, we have been presented with varying reasons justifying boundary changes, including elimination of achievement gap, equity in terms of opportunity or outcome, socioeconomic diversity, desegregation, and addressing of poverty. However, when scrutinized, none of those goals are advanced solely as a result of moving children around as part of a district-wide boundary changes. In fact, boundary changes have premise primarily on socioeconomic rebalancing would worsen conditions and outcomes. In order to strengthen communities, MCPS should focus on addressing the needs of individual schools rather than simply changing their population and demographics. MCPS has been doing more of an effective job of that by strategically establishing special programs at various schools all over the county based on individual needs. Those prior efforts by MCPS would be undermined as a result of district-wide rebounding changes as students currently benefiting from those programs could be moved away from them. And if MCPS is serious about the implementation of the Commission's recommendations, then there is an even lesser justification for any significant boundary changes. We also request, on behalf of the parents that are here from the school as well, we also request that MCPS be transparent in its true intent here. For example, even though the notice to today's hearing references four different criteria that will be used under the boundary study, MCPS has already gone on record in advocating diversity and socioeconomic conditions as its primary factors at the expense of geography, logistics, and commute times, including most recently during the Germantown-Clarksville-Seneca Valley redistricting debate. If that is truly the case, MCPS should officially declare the socioeconomic diversity, including rebalancing of farm rates, as its primary guiding factor, and as such, the only option to achieve that is through countywide boundary reassignments or busing that move children significantly away from their current schools. The bottom line here is that the boundary changes premise on socioeconomic diversity and rebalancing of farm rates is not an effective or efficient approach and would cause significant unintended hardships. Parents have already emphasized the value of neighborhood schools, logistics, transportation, commutes, and geographical factors should not be undermined. Increasing commute times, parents not being able to be involved and invested in their schools, faraway from neighborhoods, decreased sleep time, and decreased time for homework with your children is not the answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will continue moving on with our testimony. Now, we will hear from Jonathan Green. Okay, Jessica Bronson.
My name is Jessica Bronson. I'm the proud mother of two children, an 11-year-old son and a 13-year-old stepson, who currently attend Montgomery County Public Schools within the Thomas-Wooton Cluster. I'm testifying in favor of the MCPS district-wide boundary analysis. In one of the wealthiest counties in the United States, we should be able to provide a high-quality education to every MCPS student, regardless of their ZIP code, race, immigration background, or socioeconomic status. I'm hopeful that the boundary analysis will shed light on how we can accomplish this important goal. My 11-year-old son has a neurodevelopmental disability, and we are grateful for all that his middle school does to support him. According to one data aggregation website, his school ranks eighth out of 313 public middle schools in Maryland. However, if my family happened to live just across the street from our current apartment, he would attend another middle school that looks entirely different, and I wonder if he would still receive the same support that he so desperately needs. This other school is ranked 92nd out of Maryland's public middle schools. It is disappointing that two schools that are so close together in geographic proximity appear so far apart in other ways. I've recently been disheartened to hear a few people in the community disparage the idea of a boundary analysis for a couple of reasons, that it may either negatively affect their property values or bring children into the student population who are less capable of success. Regarding the first point, I believe that we should not prioritize property values when addressing educational improvements in our community. Doing so primarily benefits the developers, who add a large premium for homes in good school districts, which subsequently locks out almost all but the wealthiest of families. Many parents, like my husband and me, move to Montgomery County to invest in our children's education, not to become real estate investors. The second argument, that we risk bringing in less capable or hard-working students, is one that I find disrespectful and personally offensive. While children like mine may not have had all the same opportunities or privileges as others, they are no less deserving of an excellent education. Before I worked my way through law school as a single mother, my son and I were low-income. We knew how it felt to worry about whether we could afford a $10 trip to the grocery store. My son knew how it felt to have classmates ask him why his teachers gave him bags of canned goods to bring home every Friday. I can assure you that as a result of our experience, he truly knows what it means to have determination, grit, and compassion. These are qualities he carries with him to school every single day. I will conclude with three final points. First, there are many parents who strongly support the boundary analysis and support desegregation, even if their voices are not always the loudest. Second, study after study has shown that students benefit when their schools reflect a variety of socioeconomic and racial backgrounds. And finally, every MCPS student deserves the highest quality education we can provide, regardless of their family income, their ZIP code, or what side of the street they live on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Stephen Austin.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Dr. McKnight and Mr. Zuckerman. My name is Lauren Berkowitz, and I'm a working parent of three kids, one in an MCPS school and two future students. I'm here tonight to discuss equity and improving educational outcomes for all students. I believe that the county has taken strides towards achieving equity recently, for example, with building community schools with wraparound services that address the unique concerns of a neighborhood and with the new curriculum. Further, we have momentum in improving education for the poor with Kerwin and the Maryland Blueprint, and now we have the infrastructure and technology, too, to improve the education gap. However, this is a critical point, and I believe that the boundary changes will be a distraction and an impediment from our ability to achieve our goals. This process has taken away valuable, limited time of the Board of Education from being able to address the needs of students, and instead flooded their email boxes with messages from concerned parents and students about boundary change. What I have found along this process is that people love their schools, whether they be top-rated or not, and that is in fact why there is so much opposition to boundary change. Those in lower-rated programs appreciate the smaller class sizes, for example. No student or parent seems to want to be chosen to be moved away from their school and neighbors that can provide extra childcare and support, even if the school to be moved to is more highly rated. See the Twin Brook Boundary Study for an example. As we do not want to disproportionately impact the poor in having to move boundaries, we should not disproportionately impact other groups either by making them the ones that must switch zones. We also have a new dashboard and a wealth of data in Montgomery County that tells us precisely where the kids are that are failing, and we can more directly address their needs. We can use this data to offer programs within these communities where these children are at risk and offer virtual enrichment through technology as well. The community school health centers will help us to identify children at earlier ages as well that are at risk. In terms of capacity issues, we can fill empty seats by incentivizing students to go to them. For example, these under-capacity schools could offer specialized or emergent programs. I know there are a number of students disappointed that they did not get into accelerated enrichment programs because there was a high-performing cohort at their school. In order to avoid a school within a school, we can make it part of the program for these advanced instruction students to mentor other students at the school as part of their coursework. So, too, these students can learn a lot from the neighborhood school families who are not in A.I.
Thank you. We have your written testimony. Thank you. Next, we will hear from Jeff He.
Dear Superintendent, dear Board of Education members, my name is Jeff He, and thank you for your dedication to the Montgomery Public Schools. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify on the district-wide boundary analysis. I want to urge the Board of Education to keep our kids in our neighborhood schools but not being bused around the county to another school far away from home. This is what is happening now in our neighboring Howard County. According to Washington Post, over 7,000 kids, about one in eight of the county's public school students, will be reassigned next year, many of them facing long bus ride. I am not saying this is going to happen here, I'm just hoping this will not happen, and I'm against any measure of busing students around to meet certain target student demographic ratio. Students should attend school close to where they live. At the same time, we should continue to invest in lower-performing schools to provide the best education experiences for every kid in the county. Busing is simply not the solution here. First of all, busing would negatively impact every single student. If my kids were put on a 14-minute bus ride to a different school next year but not a neighboring school 10 minutes away, we would be really mad. They won't have enough time for sleep, homework, extracurricular activities, and bond with the family. They would also have to separate from their neighborhood kids. This would be much harder for my wife and I to volunteer or participate in school activities as well if they are not in my neighborhood. Number two, history has shown that busing was not effective in closing the educational gaps among different schools. Most Americans disapprove the concept of busing. Every Gallup poll conducted with the most recent one showing 80% disapproving busing as a way to create integration. The investment to make busing happen should be better spent on other measures such as facilities upgrade, after-school programs, community support, magnet program, and parental involvement to close the education gap. Number three, people do not like uncertainty. I choose where my family live based on where my kids will go to school. I settle in Montgomery County for the best, some of the best schools in the county. If that becomes uncertain in the future, people just cannot plan for their life, and I think a lot of people would agree with that. That will lead to, a lot of people may consider other places to live other than Montgomery County. So we will see less... So we will see less diverse population growth for our kids to have a diverse experience at school. This will have many other domino effect as well if we go down the path of busing students. In summary, please try to use the principle of neighborhood schools in the boundary decision and avoid any busing decision. This will not be good for our kids and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Jay Guan.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent Smith. My name is Jay Guan. I'm the board chair of the Chinese American Parent Association, Montgomery County. Today, I want to share a story with you. This is a story of a kid. The place, San Gabriel Valley of Los Angeles. This kid went to a high school named Arroyo High School in the city of Emonte. It was a school of about 2,000 students, most of which are low-income. He was among the low-income families in that school. His parents worked at a garment factory and spoke limited English. He recently moved there and enrolled as a sophomore. He didn't know anyone, and worst of all, he had not a clue as to where to go after high school and how to get there. Military? Community college? What's the difference between community college and four-year university? Extracurricular activities? What are those? The kid was lost. The kid's parents were understandably concerned. They asked the kid if he wanted to go to Arcadia High instead. They would even risk using a relative's address to send him there. Arcadia High School was a school with about 3,000 students, 15% of which is considered farm. It was, and still is, considered one of the good high schools in the area. In the parent's mind, the kid would be better off if he go to that good school instead. However, the parents did not know that Arroyo had an array of support services, dedicated college application counselor, college and career centers, translation services, and caring teachers who pointed the kid in the right direction. The kid gave the parents the offer some thought and said, "No, the additional commute would be hard on everyone." Most importantly, the kid did not see how going to Arcadia would help. Arcadia did not have all the aforementioned services. If the kid did go there, what would the kid do? Buck his rookie classmate to death? Fast forward to the present, I'm happy to report that the kid graduated college with a degree in engineering, gainfully employed in said field, and started a family. In all sense of the word, the kid was considered overly mobile when compared with his parents. He made it, so to say. I would know all of this because I was that kid. I'm here, I'm where I am today because of the support I've received. I am where I am today because of the dedication of the teachers at Arroyo. I am where I am because I chose not to go to Arcadia, as strange as that sounds. The moral of the story? I was not aware of so-called farm disparity when I was a kid. I was not aware that I and my friends were segregated. I was not aware that my farm status would impact my outcome. I was only aware that the helps were there when I needed it. It is often said that the indicators of poverty is highly correlated with poor educational achievement. We must remember that correlation does not causality make. So when moving forward with this effort, we should keep in mind what the kid actually needs, not just some quantified metrics in their relationships. After all, education is about the kids. This is about the kids, right?
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Seth King. Okay, I don't see Seth. Now, we will hear from Amber Lesnewicz.
I'm Seth.
Are you Seth King? Okay, will you come up?
Good evening. I am Seth King, Dr. Seth King. I have been a practicing psychologist, working with children and families in Maryland in the District of Columbia since 2002. I specialize in conducting court-ordered evaluations for families. I've been qualified as an expert witness in family and child-related matters over 150 times. As a psychologist who has assessed thousands of children with lower socioeconomic backgrounds, I commend individuals seeking enhanced educational opportunities. I also welcome analysis designed to improve the school system in our area overall. I would like to use my testimony to highlight some components that should be taken into account during this analysis. The impact and risk of transitioning children into different schools is significant on multiple levels. For example, adolescence would be particularly vulnerable to experiencing negative consequences if faced with involuntarily switching schools outside of the expected transition from middle school to high school. Adolescence is a period during which individuals are already undergoing significant developmental, physical, cognitive, self-image, and emotional changes. The level of stress confronting teenagers in today's environment is continuously rising. While new experiences and obstacles can be healthy for developing resilience, an unplanned removal from a familiar context is a significant life change that could likely exacerbate the instability that accompanies adolescence. Also, children with pre-existing conditions could be especially impacted in a negative fashion. I've witnessed children with mental health diagnoses, such as anxiety and depression, face an intensification of symptoms when removed from familiar environments. Another risk consists of students who have individualized educational programs and 504 plans to address learning disabilities and emotional challenges. Such children have become accustomed to the structure offered through educational support services already established in their current schools. Changing these environments brings significant risk of disrupting the academic progress of those students who are already struggling to overcome their educational challenges. In closing, it is important to note that the aforementioned issues could affect any child regardless of his or her socioeconomic status. It is my professional opinion that involuntary school changes could come at a cost to individual students that far outweighs the benefits. Based on my 20 years of experience as a psychologist focusing on children and their environments, I believe the risks associated with forced relocation are significant and complex and should be seriously considered during any analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Amber Lesnewicz.
My name is Amber Lesnovich, and I am a parent and Montgomery County student. I am also a teacher within the DC public school system. Based on the achievement gap discussions tonight, I have a lot of feelings, but I want to talk about some of the things that I have done on research regarding the boundaries within Montgomery County as they exist currently. Based on these data and what many of the students talked about today, some of the boundaries represent what could be classified as economic gerrymandering. If we look at the boundaries that exist, there are SES differences of over 60% between two adjacent boundaries. For elementary school students, this is not necessarily a problem, but longitudinally compounded effects of socioeconomic status can have negative impacts for high school students. To begin, you can't really see, these are very detailed data. This is the schools from 20895 ZIP code. I'm going to focus on three specifically. I'm going to look at Kensington Parkwood, Garrett Park, as well as Rockview Elementary. These schools all boundary one another, yet their economics are vastly different. Rockview has an economic rate of 50% farms, whereas KP has 8%, and Garrett Park is 17%. Yet, they share a boundary. If we look at these boundary maps as drawn, this is Garrett Park. This is economic gerrymandering. As you can see, it reaches all the way from where Garrett Park is in the south to the north where we have a single street that is eliminated. This is an apartment complex with $15,000 or $1,500 a month is the rent. This is less than half that of the rest of the Garrett Park cluster. If we look at Kensington Parkwood, we see that there is additional economic gerrymandering. We have the major part in Kensington proper, whereas we have a small island across Rockville Pike. This is busing. This is busing for economic stability of the wealthy. We have the average home price in that island is $700,000 per, in a home. This is not to increase the diversity of the school, it is to keep it the same. This is the, this is the Rockview Boundary. As you can see, it is sensical, and it is also the school with the lowest SES of those three. If we look at Garrett Park versus Wheaton Woods, not to pick on Garrett Park, we see that there's a difference of nearly 60%. There, we'd expect some variance, but this is systematic. But what we see is that the Wheaton Woods students outperformed the Garrett Park students on the recent STAR ratings. However, those differences flip-flop once those students get to high school. This is showing that the compounded effects of socioeconomic status is, over time, is very important. The students at Walter Johnson have a 200-point-on-average higher SAT score than the Wheaton students, and this is unacceptable. Thank you very much for your time.
At this time, we will hear from Charles Zhang. And I do not see him at this time. I don't see lights from board members to take questions. We will go on to Jason Maloney.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity. My name is Jason Maloney, and my wife, Andy, and I are proud parents of three MCPS students. I appear today to raise concerns about the current boundary study, and specifically the criteria you've outlined for changing boundaries. Overcrowding in our schools has reached epidemic proportions. Yet, I'm puzzled why changing the demographics of the schools is a greater priority. I do not understand why one solution, boundaries, should be employed to address several issues at once. To this end, I have several suggestions. I ask that you decouple the school overcrowding issue with the effort to examine what is working and not working in schools. I heard a lot of stories just earlier about equity, and I'm intrigued. I'd like to know what's behind that. Why don't we have equity? I have no objections to tweaks to the boundaries. Let's go ahead and study the boundaries. I have no objections to changing it. You're building new schools, you're renovating other schools. Naturally, boundaries should change. If you adjusted boundaries according to the current population totals, for example, using the next census, and employed better projections about student enrollment in years to come, you'd save money on transportation costs, ease overcrowding, and address some capacity issues. You would then have more funds to tackle raising the standards for schools or addressing whatever equity issues exist. Equity should not be your objective, it should be excellence. Second, please study the issue of school performance. To leap to the conclusion that boundaries need to be redrawn to recreate, to create more economic diversity, sounds like you've already arrived at the conclusion before asking the right questions. One of your own board members earlier said she was concerned that the process was moving too quickly without enough community feedback. Sure, input is needed, but so is a deep analysis of the data and interviews with administrators, teachers, and students. I'm surprised the Board is not more intellectually curious about why some schools in the county are underperforming, and no empirical conclusions about why seem to exist. I have no objections to my taxes supporting all schools. That's my duty as a citizen of the county. But if the input is not getting the desired output, any reasonable person would want to know why. Fixing schools would seem to be a far more logical solution than moving students. Finally, it seems like by prioritizing demographics, the Board of Education is trying to solve a problem that's really a county issue, and that's the need to create more affordable housing everywhere throughout the county. Growing the amount of affordable housing opens schools to more students. Anyone who wants a great education is welcome to move to my neighborhood. I don't think you should be using diversity as your goal for redrawing boundaries. If you do so, you're following the model of our two political parties for who have done this for years in gerrymandering congressional districts, to their shame. Congratulations, the US Congress is poised to be your spirit animal. Please think long and hard before you roll out this new Koch approach to school reform. You might be surprised to find the county prefers Koch Classic.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Deirdre Apple.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Board of Education. Good evening, Superintendent Smith. My name is Deirdre Apple, and I've lived in Montgomery County for more than 25 years. I've been an MCPS student, parent, for 11 years, and I remember Montgomery County from way back then. King Farm was still a cow field. The inter-county connector was the thing of dreams, and the Washington Nationals didn't even exist yet. But that was also the last time that Montgomery County made changes to the boundary. Since then, Montgomery County has increased its population by nearly 125,000 people, and MCPS students have grown by more than 34,000. Nonetheless, this should not be an us-and-them argument. We are one county, one superbly diverse, thriving county, a county with children who want to learn but whose county leaders have failed them. Education is supposed to be the great equalizer, but education in our county is not equal. MCPS has, for many years, been considered the bellwether of Maryland education, but if we dig a little deeper, the inequities become clear. Examples of disparity are everywhere. Some elementary schools make students share bedraggled copies of books, whereas other students get to go visit the Washington Symphony to learn about something firsthand. Some students have an artist-in-residence, where other schools have lost their band and art teachers. Some schools are so overcrowded that kids have to sit on the floor when other schools have hundreds of open seats just across the street. These disparities seem to follow a pattern. The students in schools with higher farms rates and higher ESOL rates are the ones who go without. I understand that many in our community are concerned about what kind of impact changes in the school boundaries might have. The truth is, our current boundary is not sustainable. It's irresponsible to spend millions of dollars adding onto schools or building new schools when schools nearby are left with vacant seats. It's inexcusable to allow de facto segregation of our students because of gerrymandered boundaries. It's reprehensible to allow that segregation to divide our students into the haves and the have-nots. I ask you to be the leaders that our children deserve. Stop segregating our students. Remember, a rising tide lifts all boats, and all of our students deserve an equal education. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Brian Kramer.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, and my fellow community members. My name's Brian Kramer. I'm a graduate of Northwood High School's Class of 2019, and I'm a freshman at American University. This is my first time speaking to this body as a graduate of MCPS, but this is not my first time speaking in support of ending de facto segregation and, in general, making sure our school system is better managed. Not only will this boundary analysis work to ensure that our schools eliminate socioeconomic and racial barriers as much as possible, but it's a responsible and necessary act. We need to give all of our students everywhere an opportunity to succeed, whether that means eliminating those barriers based on class or race, or ensuring that students don't go to an overcrowded school that can be fixed through boundary changes. Our boundaries have remained virtually stagnant for decades, resulting in insanely outdated maps that create overcrowded schools throughout our county. The goal of making sure that we have diverse schools and make sure they're not overcrowded and close in proximity do not conflict, and I think that needs to be addressed more. I think that, overall, we're fighting for more construction money from the state, or from, yeah, from the state, but it's not guaranteed. We can redraw our maps, make sure that schools are less crowded, and also, you know, make sure that our resources are used already effectively, because we have so many resources in MCPS, but when the maps are drawn in a way that makes sure they're not used effectively, that disadvantages every single student. To sum it up, overcrowded and segregated schools do not help anybody. We have the tool to solve this issue right in front of us, and MCPS needs to use it. I study education right down the red line at American, and every single day I'm in that class, I learn about why the status quo of what we're doing here in MCPS is wrong and needs to change right now. We can and we must do better. We have to demand better because our students, staff, and parents all deserve better. I stand with the students that spoke here today, by the way, all of them speaking in favor of the boundary analysis and in ending socioeconomic segregation, and fighting for change for our school system, because they're the future and they recognize the benefits of this analysis. Thank you for your time, and I hope all of you begin to realize how important this study will be to all students regardless of where they're from, what they look like, and how much money they make. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Craig Fritzen.
Chair, members of the Board, students. Our children are all very different, and the care taken by our schools to ensure each child's education is optimized has so far been admirable. In our household, both my wife and I work, and I stand before you today in the hopes that my testimony will bring light to some concerns we have to ensure a well-rounded approach to the countywide boundary study you are embarking on. The result of this boundary study is not finalized, but the outcome could be significant depending on the direction chosen on the recommendations by WXY Architecture. One question I have for the Board relates to the firm selected to do the countywide boundary study. It appears there was only one other firm who submitted a proposal to complete this task, and I was hoping the Board could make public their selection process. This firm, which primarily engages in architecture and urban planning, includes only five examples of their representative work related to education-based research in their proposal. Of the works, three study specific areas in New York City, while one focuses on Boston and the impact of their school choice system. The most relative, the most relevant capacity study completed that I could find was in Neuroshell, New York, and that system has less than 5,000 students and only one high school, which is hardly comparable. Additionally, I could not find any follow-up research to see if the implementations of any of their recommendations of the studies were successful. My concern is for all of our children, as all of our children will become our future teachers, doctors, mechanics, firefighters, police officers, and leaders in our community, and it's our duty to provide every child access to equitable education, affording them the opportunity to meet their potential. As a parent of four, I understand the difference between everybody testing well and those meeting their fullest potential. In my house, my children are all very different, with different abilities in different areas of study and in life. I hope the Board and the study sees the same and focuses much of their time in determining if the inputs, such as resource availability, curricula, instructional methods, are equitable instead of the outputs. Although school quality can narrow the achievement gap, schools only make up a small part of student achievement. The rest can be attributed to non-school factors, such as one's living conditions. We must take stock of living conditions and assess students' health, cognitive development, and social and emotional growth. We must also address what schools and classrooms can do, and finally, we must advocate for the programs and services proven to level the academic playing field. The gap is something that requires a comprehensive approach, for which I wholeheartedly support and may not be addressed solely by moving some borders.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Rohini Tohan.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, Mrs. Evans, and Board members. My name is Rohini Tohan, and I'm the parent of a ninth grader at Whitman High School and a fourth grader at Bradley Hills Elementary School. We have been in the Whitman cluster since my oldest was in kindergarten, and we've lived in Bethesda since then. And I sincerely thank you for everything you've done to ensure that they have had a tremendous experience in MCPS schools. While I'm in full agreement that the boundary analysis is warranted and critical in looking at the school system as a whole, I wish to express my concern that this boundary change, this boundary study may be used strictly as a tool to address socioeconomic inequity in a county as large as MCPS. As an educator and administrator in a neighboring school system, I know that there are many effective options to ensure socioeconomic equity in schools. I suggest that the boundary analysis take a close look at optimizing the use of current as well as new school programming. The success of every school lies in its ability to meet the academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of all children. Rather than potentially focusing strictly on moving students from one school to another to address overcrowding, we should focus on making schools in more challenged areas become more competitive and desirable to attend. I personally work in such a school. We have a very challenged socioeconomic demographic, yet we are one of the most sought-after schools to attend. We accomplish this not by moving students around, but rather by increasing challenging, rigorous academic programs at our schools and making them available for other students that would not regularly be slated to attend that school. Therefore, our focus should be on how we help each individual student. I have well over two decades of experience from working in one of the largest school systems in our nation, and I speak from experience. Students truly thrive when they attend their neighborhood schools. Students take more pride in attending school, which ultimately results in better grades, attendance, and less discipline issues than when students don't have connections or ties to their school. It is my sincere hope that the boundary study will keep students within walking distance to a school in their neighborhoods, as well as use accurate data, waiting for the 2020 consensus. I also wish to highlight the traffic patterns be given serious consideration in an already congested area. As an administrator, I know for a fact that idle students on a long bus ride to and from school is not an ideal situation, and it is something lawmakers must be mindful of and avoid at all costs. And finally, shortly after spending millions of dollars changing the bell schedule to enable our students to have a later start and get the sleep they need, sending students anywhere other than their local school community would be counterproductive to this idea.
Thank you. I haven't said it today, so if you have not timed your testimony at the red buzzer, please stop, just to be respectful of everybody that's here looking to read their testimony as well. So at this time, we will hear from Ha Su Beck.
Good evening. My name is Ha Su Beck. I'm a fellow resident of this county, parent of two and plus MCPS students, and an urban planner whose job happens to entail tracking MCPS's enrollment and capacity data. Lately, my work has been focused on analyzing student generation rates at small neighborhood scales, think census data, to examine various factors that may contribute to overutilized schools. Though I stand here with a perspective gained during that experience, I speak solely in my individual capacity as a resident and parent, and not as a representative of any organization. So what brings me here today? It is to share my view on our current practice around overutilized facilities and support the efforts of the boundary analysis. I am realizing that trying to address overutilization primarily through adding capacity at affected schools is a lot like playing a game of whack-a-mole. There are a number of factors that have been found to be correlated to neighborhood student generation rates, but that doesn't necessarily help us identify which schools might become overutilized next. For example, the densest areas where we see most housing growth occurring, think downtown Bethesda, downtown Silver Spring, north Bethesda, have the lowest student generation rates of the entire county. A lot of our moles, or overutilized schools, are instead popping up when enough housing units in existing neighborhoods are turned over to families with children again. Well, can we crack that code and whack the next mole? Out of personal curiosity, I'd say, why not? But have you ever started playing a game of whack-a-mole only to realize that your mallet is tied to a string too short? Even when you see a mole, you just can't reach it. Isn't that how our capital budget looks like year after year? How about those times when you aim full force at a mole staring right at you, only to miss it by a millisecond? Isn't it possible, too, that if we keep adding capacity at overutilized schools, enrollment would reach its peak at some and then start to decline, perhaps leading to another round of school closings? If we keep treating school boundaries as an untouchable hard line, we are not only limiting ourselves from options to address school capacity in a more timely, economic, and sustainable way, we also hurt the county's effort in addressing inequality in its housing patterns. I repeat, we hurt the county's effort in addressing inequality in its housing patterns. That's why I not only find this boundary analysis to be inevitable, I would also urge that a strategy for successful implementation be considered as a follow-up. Even then, if we continue to maintain a hard line on fixed boundaries afterwards, these issues may very well reoccur and persist again. So please keep that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from David Parkhurst.
Good evening. My wife and I are parents of fourth graders at Leightonville Elementary, which is in the Gaithersburg cluster in the northern part of the county. Good to see you all again. I was here a few weeks ago testifying in support of a boundary study request for the Leightonville school that was submitted last spring. Unfortunately, the superintendent rejected, and I urged you, behalf of the Board, to reverse the superintendent's decision. I hope my placement tonight near the end is not a reflection of your decision. My testimony tonight, however, does build off of my testimony of a couple weeks ago. I want to make three points for you tonight. First, please don't place a moratorium on cluster-specific boundary study requests during this countywide interim study period. This delaying tactic harms students and their families in the MCS pipeline currently. A moratorium also will not stop the county council or the planning commission from approving new developments and growth that will make the current stranglehold of congestion and transportation infrastructure conditions that we face now only worse. We need school boundary changes now, not years from now, when this study process is completed. Point number two, because of the explosive growth and development of our county, let's consider expanding the concept of geographic proximity that's part of the boundary study four-factor process, and place an emphasis on congestion-based, not mileage-based, measures of distance traveled by students. Example, we live several miles north of Sundown Road, upper Montgomery County, and closer to Damascus than Gaithersburg. But under the current cluster articulation mandate that we face, in less than two years, our sons will be traveling against rush hour traffic on, instead of that, traveling against rush hour traffic on 108 to Damascus, our boys are going to face a nearly one-hour congested bus ride with traffic each way daily for the seven years that they're currently slated to go to Gaithersburg Middle and Gaithersburg High School. At minimum, during this interim study period, allow students like ours that live in or near the agricultural reserve to split articulate, in particular, between Gaithersburg, Damascus, or Sherwood, based on traffic congestion and safety considerations. Or alternatively, as I mentioned before, let's consider liberalizing the COSA requirements. And finally, as a starting point for redrawing school boundaries, let me offer a suggestion going forward. Let's consider replacing the current cluster system by dividing the county into four quadrants. Let's replicate the scope of academic opportunities within each quadrant to match the current suite of opportunities for students in the two consortions that are down county. Allow families to select where to send their kids within this quadrant based on their educational goals and objectives. Operationally, however, we'd understand that the school system would only provide bus transportation to schools closest to the student's home address. The quadrant concept would offer all students equality of opportunity and diversity of choice. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Vicky Nakanishi.
Good afternoon, good evening, Dr. Smith and the distinguished Board of Education members. I understand there's a lot at stake, and you're dealing with a lot of conflicting interests, so I thank you for your hard work and allowing us to be heard. I'm a parent of a current fourth grader at Gibbs Elementary, a sixth grader at Rocky Hill, and a senior at Clarksburg High. I'm grateful that our children are exposed to such diversity in up county. For the first time, our children had the opportunity to have their public school education tested while we lived abroad last year, and my third grader at the time was the only third grader who didn't know her multiplication and was behind. She was able to catch up and is now in fourth and fifth grade compact math. My 11th grader last year, despite having a 4.6 GPA, didn't pass the advanced pre-calc assessment in her international school because the honors math program at Clarksburg did not prepare her. She ended up taking an on-grade level pre-calc, which ironically prepared her for an AP calc this year at Clarksburg. I say this to reveal that our system, which is considered to be advanced, is in reality just average or even subpar compared to international standards. We pride ourselves into thinking that if our kids take advanced classes, then they're ahead of the pack. My wake-up call was that their education is just average, and so with the re-boundary study, shifting our kids to Neillsville Middle School, a middle school that's the Maryland State Board of Education listed as at-risk and low-performing school, Neillsville is one of two middle schools in the entire county of 40 middle schools. That greatly concerns me if my child would even have an average education. If there was a definitely plan to rid Neillsville reputation for being a prison on the hill by approving for a new building, more teachers, and more resources, I'd be more comfortable with the change. I'm very well aware of the overcrowding at both Rocky Hill and Clarksburg. My oldest and her friends have to sit on the floors and the hallways to eat their lunches since freshman year. We welcome change to alleviate the overcrowding, and we're excited that our sixth grader and his little sister can potentially attend Seneca Valley. However, you're overlooking the fact that Neillsville Middle School as it stands today is not up to code for the standards of a 21st-century school. Children shouldn't have to worry if they feel safe while they're in a school with no windows. Children shouldn't have to worry if they are able to use the toilet or not. It's unimaginable that we live in one of the richest nations in the world, with MCPS being amongst one of the richest public school systems in the nation, and yet Neillsville Middle School got left behind. It doesn't even have adequate restroom facilities for its students. If you manage, manage to change schools, please give us the facility that the kids can be safe and be proud to learn in, and please give us an alternative to 11A. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, we will hear from Crystal Mullins.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Crystal Mullins, and I live on Fitzgerald Drive, which is located off of Griffith Road in Leightonville. I'm a proud parent of a biracial fifth-grade student who attends Leightonville Elementary School. I'm in favor of the boundary study, and I'm in favor of boundary changes. I'm here to request that you consider expanding the COSA requirements for those students who reside west and north of Sundown Road, or reduce them to a closer school for the 2020-2021 school year without delay. Currently, we are slated to attend Gaithersburg Elementary School. GMS is located 9.2 miles away from our pickup location, and Gaithersburg High School is located a whopping 9.7 miles away. Now, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that none of you on the Board have ridden or followed the school bus from these locations. However, I have. During a normal day, our children will spend no less than one hour on the bus each way to and from school. When there's a substitute, when there's a substitute bus driver, that time increases. The traffic congestion is significant. It's frustrating enough to make those long commutes as an adult, let alone force it on children. This significant length of time on a multi-lane highway increases MCPS liability by placing these children at a greater risk of personal injury via an accident. Moreover, these lengthy bus rides will place my child and other children at a disadvantage. It increases their likelihood to be tardy when there's a substitute or when there are accidents. It decreases the amount of time they have to spend on homework. Overall, it decreases their ability to learn. What's worse, it affects their overall quality of life. This is an impact, there is an impact on sleep and a decrease in the time for after-school activities, as well as family and friends. Because it is close to proximity to where we live, my LES student, along with many others, participate in after-school activities in Damascus and Alny as well. There are more logical options here. John T. Baker is 8.8 miles away, and Damascus High School is 8.5 miles away from our pickup location. Rosa M. Parks is located 7.4 miles away, and Sherwood is located 10.4 miles away from our pickup location. Routes to Damascus and Sherwood schools go against traffic and therefore would result in less time being spent on the bus. Our children would be safer going against traffic. Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now. The time is today. It's time that we start putting the quality of life and the safety of our children before politics. Let's expand the COSA criteria for this area or permit the parents who reside in this area to choose Gaithersburg, Damascus, or Alny for their kids for 2021. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I wanted to thank WXY Architecture and Design for coming out earlier, coming out today and giving a brief presentation to our audience. I want to ask my colleagues if you have any closing thoughts or remarks. Ms. Dixon?
I just wanted to mention from Craig Friedson, and this is completely, you know, for you to take a look at, but there is an article in the Washington Post, I think it is today, on the work that WXY did in Brooklyn, I think it is. You know, it was, it was informative, so I would just recommend that to you.
I just wanted to mention from Craig Fritzen, and this is completely, you know, for you to take a look at, but there is an article in the Washington Post, I think it is today, on the work that WXY did in Brooklyn, I think it is. You know, it was, it was informative, so I would just recommend that to you. And also to Vicky Nakonishi, I think, I don't know, messed your name up, I'm sorry. But the superintendent has placed Neillsville Middle School in the CIP to rebuild the school completely, and I expect that that's what we will, in fact, you know, agree to do. But I want to just thank everybody for coming out this evening. You know, I'm sorry I had to leave for a little bit. Terrible, whatever it is inside that's just not working. But anyway, it was really very, very helpful to hear from you all this evening, and we do appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Vestry?
Just wanted to ask some, what the follow-up is. I know that it was the series of meetings that are coming up for additional community engagement were presented at the beginning of this presentation, but what can folks expect at those meetings? Just wanted to ask that question.
Well, I think we would turn to the consultant to ask them what that might look like.
So those, those workshops will be an opportunity for us to hear from people. We will begin with a presentation, and so we are beginning a process of doing data analysis, and we want to be able to go through some of the information that we're finding with members of the public and then also get their feedback. So those are really opportunities to share. The format will really be based on presentation and then roundtable discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the, the final report will be, remind us when will that be presented to the board?
The resolution calls for the final report to be to the board by June of 2020, so.
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We heard you. I appreciate the civil conversation, and we do want to hear from everyone, varied perspectives. Thank you. Have a good night. Mrs. Smodrowski?
So I will echo the comments of my colleagues, just thanking everybody for coming out, and particularly for trying to be as respectful of everyone's different opinions and perspectives as possible. I too had one quick question in terms of the community outreach, and that was basically, you know, we are aware that there are a lot of communities for various reasons that aren't able to come and, and talk to us or even attend some of your meetings, even if they are well-advertised. What kind of door knocking are we going to be doing to make sure that we specifically target areas that we don't hear from?
Could you speak into microphones, otherwise the TV viewers can hear you as well? Thank you.
As far as the outreach engagement process and some of the things that we're doing is we're conducting interviews with various members of the community to try to get their input. We'll be targeting smaller groups of people, hard-to-reach groups, in order to have maybe smaller meetings in addition to the six area-wide meetings and that are, will be happening in December and in January. And we're augmenting all of the communications that the Montgomery County Public Schools are doing. So we'll be reaching out to student groups, nonprofit, other educational organizations, individuals that we're receiving names of, as well as putting a online, online engagement tool so that those who cannot get to the meetings can look at the same questions and data and provide us input. So we're trying to reach out to people not only in face-to-face meetings, but also through online engagement.
Thank you.
So no door knocking is anticipated?
I think, I think this is going to depend as it unfolds, so we, depending on the, if we need to, we will. We're going to work with Derek Turner and his team, Everett Davis and our Student Family Engagement and Student Services Team, as well as WXY and Public Engagement, and we'll see. Door knocking very well may be a possibility through parent-community coordinators, and some of it will just depend on, on how the process unfolds, so we'll have to wait and see.
Okay. Ms. Wolf?
I too want to thank you for coming out this evening, and thank you for the civility that was shown. While there may be differences of opinion in the audience, we want you to know that your voice does matter. Again, thank you for coming out.
Mrs. O'Neil?
I too want to thank everyone for coming out and the civil tone this evening. I encourage everyone to come and look at the MCPS website for accurate information. I know that there are neighborhood listservs that put out, have put out a lot of information, or some of it is what I would deem maybe fake news. So I think that the best way to stay informed, there's a specific place on the MCPS website for the boundary analysis, stay updated. I also wanted to point out, we had a couple of references to our COSA or student transfer policy. It is out for public comment right now. It's public policy JEE. The board has proposed some changes to the student transfer policy. And I also wanted to point out, we had a lot of people talk about busing. This is a boundary analysis, but we do have, currently have 100,000 students who ride buses, albeit mostly to neighborhood schools, community schools, some to magnet programs, special education programs. We have 100,000 students on buses right now. We have many of our high school students who in the afternoon after extracurriculars ride the ride-on buses, and they now have a pass to ride free on all of the countywide ride-on buses. So we are having students ride the buses, although not from Damascus to Bethesda or Bethesda to Clarksburg, but we have 100,000 kids riding the buses because we have 165,000.
Dr. Daca?
Yeah, I also want to thank you for coming out and for your comments and listening to other people. This has been a very long process for us, and I do recommend that you read the article in the Post, as Ms. Dixon said. The company that was chosen had worked with only, had worked with places that had the kind of diversity that we have, and you can certainly say that about Brooklyn. The school system in New York City has over a million children in it, but they are very diverse, and they are trying to do some of the changes that we want to do for ethnicity and for economics. And I also want to thank our staff who has worked so hard in trying to make sure we understood the maps, the schools, and all the questions that we keep asking them. So we thank you for that, and we thank WY, W?
WXY? WXY, thanks. Dr. Smith, any closing thoughts, remarks?
I would just say thank you very much for the thoughtful, reasoned considerations. I, as a parent of five children and now six grandchildren, understand that, you know, there's an element of something being personal to every one of us, and certainly I wrote down just about everything each of you said, and so I really appreciate this opportunity tonight very much. Thank you for coming and spending your time here.
Yes, and so before we leave, just again, just wanted to echo the thoughts of my colleagues. We really do appreciate all your different perspectives. We read your testimony. So for those of you I cut off, we will be able to read your testimony. Wanted to thank our board staff for all their help and support and organizing for tonight. Wanted to thank MCPS Security, MCPS TV, Central, Senior Leadership, just everybody for helping to make this a night, once again, a success. And for those of you who are able to tune in, tomorrow we will have our work session at, tune in at about 5:30, I believe. Two o'clock, right, okay. Two o'clock, my apologies. So thank you and have a good evening. We are adjourned.